Good evening. It is five thirty PM on Wednesday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three in this regular meeting of the sample. Is now called to order in council chambers here at eleven twenty-three West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are counselors Kate McAllister, Council President Kate McAllister, counselors Joel Espiro, Andy Groth, Jason Welker, and here comes Counselor Justin Dick right on time. Counselor Deb Rule is absent this evening. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility policy, the presiding officer, as the presiding officer, I am to identify law enforcement personnel. In the room, he'll be serving as our Sergeant of Arms this evening. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn with us. Captain Bailey, there he is. Okay, thanks. All right. If everyone will please rise for the pledge of allegiance. So I would like to take this opportunity to recognize former Mayor Ron Cheney, who recently passed away. Mayor Cheney was born and raised in Sandpoint. He held the office of mayor from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-one, and then served a portion of a second term, having been appointed following the resignation of Mayor Scheffler in the mid-nineties. In his obituary, his family shared that being the mayor of Sandpoint was a labor of love for Mayor Cheney, and they listed many of his accomplishments as mayor. He negotiated a deal to move out of the old city hall into a more spacious quarters that included a public safety office where the new city hall plus raises for the city employees was accomplished without the use of taxpayer funds. Construction of a boat ramp memorial field, the new marina at City Beach, a water pressure booster system on Woodland Drive, improved business park near the airport, and construction of a business incubator, helping to create almost thirty-four hundred new jobs. Construction of the Third Avenue Swimming Pier, reconstruction of the city's watershed reservoir after it was destroyed during a washout on Schweizer Road. And he helped push through the removal of three and a half miles of Union Pacific Railroad tracks, eliminating twenty-three unprotected at-grade crossings of the Central Business, uh, crossings between Dover and Sandpoint. Mayor Cheney was on the Board of Directors of the Central Business Association and the Festival of Sandpoint, and was a member of the Sandpoint Rotary Club for forty years. It is obvious that Mayor Cheney cared deeply for his community and its citizens, and because of his labor of love, his legacy lives on in Sandpoint. He will be missed. Are there any announcements from council? All right, hearing none. Are there any announcements from staff?
Uh, just one tonight, Mr. Mayor. Um, upcoming permitted special events on the twenty-seventh of this month is the Peak Seven B Youth Triathlon at City Beach, and Counselor Joel Espiro has something to do with that first event this year, so uh, that's just recently been permitted.
All right. Thank you, counselor, for getting that going. That's exciting.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address the council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or in any, I, uh, any topic not listed on the agenda. If anyone here in council chambers wishes to speak now, uh, during the public forum or during, during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a sign-up form, which is available by the table, uh, on the table by the front door. Um, complete it and please hand it to staff, any staff member at the back of the room there at the back table. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak during the public forum, you, uh, will please raise your hand on this, at this time. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we'll provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. I'll now recite the rules and procedure for public comment during the meeting. Counsel may not hear or take testimony during public forum on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during properly noticed public hearings. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the council may be determined to be inappropriate for public forum. Those in attendance shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous contract, conduct, use, use threatening or abusive language, hold up or display any type of sign, speak out of turn, or clap, or engage in any other similar act which disturbs the meeting. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public, the public portion of the meeting. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to myself, to council, or to staff, and please do not approach the dais. Also, please do not approach the clerk or other staff at the front, uh, table up here as this, uh, disrupts the meeting and it makes it difficult for them to do their work. You may inquire of staff at the back table who can provide assistance if needed. Unless otherwise provided, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When it is your turn to speak, please introduce yourself and state whether you reside in Sandpoint City Limits. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public portion of the meeting this, this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Janine Shepherd.
Janine Shepherd, Bonner County, just here to pray for you guys today as we head into the meeting. Just want to ask the Lord's blessings. So if you'd like, I would love it if you would pray with me. Dear Lord, we are seeking you and all your wisdom and goodness to guide and direct what is done tonight. Your voice reigns supreme, and we want to follow you. We thank you for this beautiful place we call home. We thank you for all the ways that you bless us daily. We see your hand of protection on us, and we want to pause and praise you. You are a good father. We ask for godly counsel and wisdom for the mayor and counselors. We pray that you and your kingdom of righteousness be manifested in the hearts of all those who are in authority. Lord, protect our city, our nation, our military, and our leaders. Turn our nation's heart towards you, holy father, that we may put you first and obey your commandments. Your word says in Second Chronicle seven, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sins and heal their land. Now my eyes will be open and my ears attentive to the prayers made in this place. For now I have chosen and sanctified this house, that my name may be there forever, and my eyes and my heart will be there perpetually. We publicly repent for the things we have done and the things we have not done. Forgive us, Father. We pray now that the blood of Jesus would wash us clean. Bring the nation to the foot of the cross to be forgiven. You are faithful and good. We stand firm today and push back the darkness that is fighting to cover our land. It may seem like we are living in dark times, but we have hope, hope in Jesus, because the light always wins. At our lowest point, you are our hope, and at our weakest points, you are our strength. We submit our lives and our city to you, Lord. You are an amazing, amazing God, and we praise you, Lord. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Holland. Good evening, Rebecca Holland. For the record, I'm approaching almost fifty years as a Bonner County resident. And, um, I apologize, I just getting off the boat from with my husband and, um, enjoying summer, and I hope you are too. You know, oops. Sorry. A point I wanted to make is today is a red flag warning day. I don't know if you guys pulled up this. Oh, shoot. Well, um, you know, there is a warning for health issues for the community. Um, as it's no surprise with our temperatures, and when the city, sorry to bring it up again, but your idea of cutting down ten beautiful, mature, lovely shade trees at Traverse Park that the community paid for and grant money paid for many years ago can never be replaced anytime soon. These are decisions that come to you guys. This is important stuff. This is environmental issues that are smacking people in the face. When I got off the boat and had a little bit of time, I drove over there and sure enough, sat with a mom who's there with her little kiddo, and it was the coolest place that she could come from her home. These, this is like, I'm telling you, this is important. And the way this other, the, you know, the way this grant thing has been rolling out, um, has been riddled with issues. The, the early thing that I brought to you on the geotech, uh, uh, testing was inaccurate. You know it. I know it. It's there. Now, this whole, well, we have to wait deal is again, kind of like a shadowed deal. This, that land is meant to be for all time, outdoor activities. And nobody, let me just say, have no problem with a tennis facility being built, but put it someplace where you're not taking trees out. I mean, it's just common sense, and this is going to come back to bite everybody in a big time way. So twenty-nine seconds, I'm telling you, it's never too late to do the right thing. And talk, deal with, deal with the state on this, deal with everybody involved. I'm following it and in, in, in close contact with the issue. So let's just like be real, okay? Nine seconds, eight seconds. Thank you for your comment. This is, I'm not, I mean, tenacity is my middle name. I get it. I am going to keep coming back to you. Thank you for your comment.
Angelica Williams.
I, I am Angelica Williams, and I have been a Bonner County resident for, um, twenty-four years now. Dear City Council, fellow locals and visitors, please bear with me as public speaking is not my strong suit, but I felt this was really important. I not only come here, I come here not only as a wife and mother, but as a third generation local and likely carrying our fourth. Traverse Park is our newest refurbished park, hosting beautiful toddler-friendly playground, a toddler-friendly playground with mature shade trees, open fields, tennis courts, bike parts, bike parks, walking paths, and baseball and soccer fields. In those open fields, we have the opportunity to play tag, frisbee, kite flying, you name it, the kids have done it. I look at these new park plans and I am appalled. You have taken the open view from the parking lot to the playground and even the BMX area and put it and put a large ugly building smack dab in the middle. Those mature shade trees will be torn down, likely to be burned in the slash pile instead of warming somebody's home, and completely tearing out the play structure. Losing visibility is a huge safety risk for moms like me who have little children in varying ages and life stages. You're taking out the lush green grass and replacing it with plastic, ensuring less fresh air, one of the main reasons for taking a child to the park. You claim this will benefit poorer kids who claim or who, uh, can't afford to ski, but I'm here to tell you, I couldn't afford to ski growing up, but I still played outside in that park. I do not have to look for some building to play, play in, and every building has to charge something just to keep up the maintenance. Either we have to pay to get in, or we have to charge the taxpayer. And frankly, I'm sick of being taxed. The city of Sandpoint needs to wake up. Think about our future and our locals. Our school is a joke. Our punishment on criminals is a joke, and our town values are a joke. You cater to the tourists, but brush the locals aside. You also have said you're waiting on a grant for the play area upgrade. What if that falls through? We lose a park. You want to replace our park that I grew up in with a pickleball building. To sum it all up, please put the building somewhere else. The budget or budget better for the land to build it. Please leave our park and our trees alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for those comments.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who wish to speak during public forum.
Okay. That concludes the public forum portion of the meeting this evening. Will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is one million sixty thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars and fifteen cents for regular payables. Does council have any questions or are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that consent calendar be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved. We now have two public hearings on the agenda this evening, seeking public testimony regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and changes to city fees. Notices for both hearings were published twice in the Bonner County Daily Bee, August first and eighth. As a reminder for those in the room, if you wish to testify, you'll need to complete a sign-up form, again, available on the table by the front door and hand it to staff, anyone at the back table you see there in the back of the room. That is, if you wish to testify, um, those on Zoom will also have the opportunity to speak, and I will call for you to raise your hands on it at this time. The first public hearing this evening is for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and use of foregone levying authority. On July nineteenth, council adopted the preliminary budget, declared intent to use foregone levying authority to both use and reserve foregone amounts, and pursuant to Idaho Code, Section fifty dash one zero zero two, scheduled the annual budget public hearing for this evening's meeting. Before we get underway with the hearing, I will first yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As an overview once again for you and for the council, we are requesting approval of our proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget in the amount of fifty-two million dollars and fifty-two million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. As discussed in our workshop presentations with the council uh, of this total budgeted, proposed budgeted amount, twenty-five million two hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars is dedicated specifically to capital improvements. Those improvements include upgrades to our, uh, water distribution system, uh, upgrades and beginning of a phased, uh, replacement of our wastewater treatment plant. A million dollars dedicated to, uh, street maintenance, um, budgeting for street and sidewalk projects and the amount of, or sidewalk projects and the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand park improvements, including the, uh, James Z. Russell Center, as well as some of the other needed improvements in our parks, including, uh, replacement of the tennis court, tennis courts at Traverse Park, and expansion of the skate park at Traverse Park as well. Uh, we are prepared to answer any questions that, uh, the council may have. Uh, we did provide a detailed presentation at the last council meeting and have had our electronic budget book, uh, online since, uh, mid-July for public comment.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate that. Does council have any questions at this time? Okay. Hearing none. We will now, uh, proceed with the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and use of foregone levying authority. Please note that the same rules and procedure for public comment is noted ear- earlier will apply to our public hearings this evening. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. However, for this public hearing and other hearing on city fees, I will allow those in the room to gift their time to another per speaker if they'd like. Both will need to complete a sign-up form, and the person speaking will need to identify who has gifted their time. This gift is available only once per speaker and the person gifting for a total of normal, normal, no more than, than six minutes for any one speaker. Madam Clerk, let's start with the ci- city residents on Zoom, please. Um, all hands will now be lowered on Zoom. For those attending on Zoom, if you are a resident inside Sandpoint City Limits and you wish to speak, please raise your hand at this time.
I don't see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are there any city residents who've signed up here in chambers to testify on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Kyle Schreiber.
Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident. Um, and as you guys know, if I'm gonna, uh, give comments on a topic, I always try to scour for information so that my comments are relevant and informed. Um, and at first glance, I thought that Clear Gov Portal would be a great way to dive into our city's budget. Um, but as I dug in, it became clear that specific info is not really available. Um, under the expenditures tab, when you select a department and then more detail, the description's given are anything but details. Uh, for example, under purchased property services, there are three entries totaling a million dollars, all three of which simply say construction services, non-capital. Well, glad that's cleared up. And the checkbook tab, which lists every transaction, for every single one, the description is just the recipient. From ASAP Services, Inc., we recently purchased six thousand dollars worth of ASAP Services, Inc. Even the projects tab, which does have info about specific projects, many of the projects don't actually list the project cost. Uh, Great Northern Project, for example, doesn't list the eighteen million dollar price tag, let alone what that money would go to. And the document, uh, documentation accompanying this agenda was even more scarce. This council recently passed an ordinance limiting the number of information requests that, uh, concerned citizen can make, albeit an undisclosed and subjective number. But is the city allowing the information necessary to make informed comments and decisions as a taxpaying citizen to be available in any other way? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber, for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has indicated a desire to speak on this topic.
Okay, uh, last chance. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I, uh, can assume that, uh, everyone who wants to speak, uh, that this public hearing has, uh, clearly had the opportunity to do so. The public hearing is now closed. Does council have any additional questions for staff, or is there any deliberation?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Jennifer, Sarah, would you be able to address some of Kyle's comments with the Clear Gov?
So does, um, I don't know if he was looking at our capital improvement, um, projects. There are actually very much a lot of detail in there. So I don't know if which ones he was looking at without actually knowing. Um, I would welcome him to come in anytime and talk to us and get those information, especially before the meeting, because we, we will sit down and talk with anybody, so. Um, but we can clear up a lot of that stuff. A lot of his navigation, there's over three hundred pages in there, so if you can't find something, ask, we can, we can point you to that. And there's a lot more detail in there if you know where to click and where to go.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, pursuant to Idaho Code, Section five zero dash one zero zero three, City Council shall, prior to the commencement of the new fiscal year, pass an ordinance to be termed the Annual Appropriation Ordinance. With the public hearing now closed, we will move on to the action item, Agenda Item seven A one, adoption of the Annual Appropriation Ordinance, and we'll begin with the council deliberation and any final questions for staff. I will now, uh, and, and I just want to give the council one last chance here. Any further questions, uh, opportunity for questions, comments, okay? I'll now read the title of the ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the City of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, termed the Annual Appropriation Ordinance pursuant to Idaho Code, Section fifty dash one zero zero three appropriating fifty-two million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars to defray the necessary expenses and liabilities of the City of Sandpoint, Idaho for the fiscal year beginning October first, tw- two thousand twenty-three, levying a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purpose for which said appropriation is made, providing for severability and an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety, be suspended in the ordinance pass's second and third reading under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
The motion passed, and this ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under suspension of the rules. And the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four Sandpoint City Budget is hereby approved and adopted, including the expenditure of funds for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four renewal term for Umpqua Bank, lease number nine seven zero seven eight zero zero five zero four three. To round out this item, the next are two, uh, next are two resolutions to allow the city to use its foregone levying authority. First, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution certifying the amount of foregone increase to be included in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? So it'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Motion passes. And for the final budget item, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution reserving the foregone amount for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four for potential use in subsequent years as described in Chapter Eight of Title sixty-three Idaho Code. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll now move on to city fees. On July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, council scheduled a public hearing for this evening's meeting to consider adoption of new fees and fees set to increase more than five percent. Before we get underway with the public hearing, I will yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Uh, in the council packet, we published in accordance with requirements, we had a detailed, uh, budget and fees discussion at, uh, a prior council meeting, and again, I would note, um, if you want to go down to highlighted sections, um, that in our proposed fee schedule, any fees that, um, our new fees are increasing by more than five percent are highlighted, were included in the council packet and discussed at, uh, the previous council meeting.
Does council have any questions for staff at this time?
I guess I have one.
Yeah.
Um, going back to the budget book, I noticed that we've actually budgeted a decrease in permit and fee revenue next year, even as we raise a lot of our fees. Is there a reason we're expecting less fee and permit revenue next year compared to this year?
Yes, um, the reason for that is in the, um, planning and development, when we were, um, before we hired, um, our current, um, we actually outsourced some of that, and then we, um, budgeted or reacted. So that was a increase in revenues, and we had, when we were not fully staffed. So without, without that we're fully staffed, we're not, um, passing those through, so.
I see. Okay.
Well, those include, um, planning reviews. We, uh, you'll recall, we had Darren Fluke on contract doing planning for us, and when we're contracting out services, it's typically more expensive than when we're using staff. We would also We would also contract out some of our engineering reviews with Brandon joining our team as our civil engineer. We brought a lot of that work back in-house again. So that's specifically what Sarah is referring to.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Before we leave this, just want to say thank you to all the staff and the hard work, the dedication that you guys have done with being proper stewards of our finances, our taxes, fees. You guys are doing an excellent job and it's been a trying time the past couple of years. And so my hat's off to you guys and deeply respect all your hard work. Thank you.
Well said. We'll now proceed with the public hearing. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I will check on Zoom one moment.
Thank you. So I'm sorry, we'll again begin with city residents. So again, if everyone can first lower their hands on Zoom if they're not, if they're already up. And if you are a resident inside the City of Sandpoint and you'd like to comment on this, please raise your hand at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe anyone wishes to speak on this item.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who've signed up to speak here in council chambers?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So I'm, there's no one here that wants to speak on city fees. That closes the public hearing this evening. We will now move on to Agenda Item seven B dash one. Adoption of new city fees and changes to existing fees and fee schedule. Counselor, are there, is there any deliberation or do you have any final questions for staff? Okay. We'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for adoption of new city fees and changes to existing fees and fee schedules. There a motion?
Or moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselors Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Grove.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We normally schedule in a recess at this point in the agenda, but I think we can keep on charging through. That was quicker than we, than I would have expected. So first item under old business, council will consider and make a decision regarding the jury's recommendation as to which design team from the downtown waterfront design competition advances to stage three of the downtown waterfront design competition. Now you have the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to. And Don Stasney is going to join me and I'm going to cover the beginning presentation and John, Don will pick up from there talking about next steps and announcing the jury's recommendation of a team to move to the stage three of the competition. I think it's important again to note with this downtown waterfront design competition that this is the beginning of a process and it's the beginning of a public process. This is not the end and it's not the end even as we move to stage three. A reminder about why we chose to go with this process. The goal, the purpose of the downtown waterfront competition was to create a framework and a master plan for our downtown that pulled together all of our existing adopted plans into a coalesced holistic vision that took our vision beyond just words, but put images to that vision as well and included recommendations about how that vision could be implemented and prioritization of that implementation. The design competition and the efforts of the teams who participated in this design competition was informed and it's guided by the history of Sandpoint and the public input efforts that have occurred to date. All of our master plans that are adopted at the city went through robust public participation processes, some with online surveys, some with online surveys, mailed surveys, all with meetings, workshops before council, public input before council made decisions. So all have had real robust public processes. And again, the objective of this was to coalesce all of those processes and ultimately to develop a master plan for our downtown and move forward our design concepts for Farmers Landing and City Beach, revetting those and finalizing those and moving into the design and final design and construction phase. We were asked through public input processes over the last couple of weeks by several people who asked for this to occur. And the answer is the community. We have heard from the community over the last several years online, in person, at council meetings, through calls into the office, in discussions between staff and the council and electeds with the mayor and the council that the public is concerned about the private development that is occurring and that that private development in our downtown core especially does not reflect the historic character and feel of our community. And the way that you influence public design and public or private design and private development is by creating a master plan for your downtown and putting forth that vision and then implementing that vision through code changes. So the purpose of this design competition ultimately is also to inform our comprehensive plan update to be incorporated into the comprehensive plan and to guide what we intend to be in budgeted for in our next year's budget, future zoning and other code changes that would ensure that the vision is accomplished. So this is very much in response to input from the public with concern about private development. We need to define what we want our downtown to look like and we need to revisit our code, including historic character, including massing and scaling of buildings and design of buildings. And we accomplish setting our standards around that with code changes. All of that was tasked with these teams. And again, moving forward, the concepts for the downtown waterfront and city beach. As we've discussed in previous meetings, much of our infrastructure down at City Beach is in fact failing. Our parking lot is getting patched together, has been for some years. And before we go ahead and resurface that parking lot, before we look at needed expansion of our marinas, we need a vision and a plan for where we're going. So we figure out how most effectively to phase it and use our dollars. So we're not constructing infrastructure that we then tear up a few years later because we're making another change. Anything we're doing relative to changes in the downtown waterfront and city beach is going to occur over many years. In fact, this is envisioned as a twenty-year plan. But we have to know where we're going and have the image of where we're going to define private development as well as our own planning at the city. Typically, the way that we would go about this process of developing a downtown master plan and refining our concepts is we would do an internal process, we would do in a request for a couple qualifications for qualified firms to do this work. We would then have firms submit their qualifications, examples of work that they've done in other areas. And we would have a review committee that would review those proposals and determine who we felt was most qualified to do this work and then bring forward a recommendation to city council to move forward with a contract with a firm. As we've discussed at our prior meetings, this work is so important to defining changes in the city, defining private development in the city and really defining code changes that take place as we get moving forward that we determined that a more thorough process was what was necessary in the selection of a team to work with the city and with the community, moving forward on code changes, master planning and design and ultimately construction of our waterfront. And what we decided was the best approach was to do this through a competition process. So as you will recall, we opened up back in February with council's approval, a request for qualifications for multidisciplinary firms who were interested in working with the city and the community on our master plan as well as development of our designs for the waterfront. We had eight teams who submitted their qualifications, all were multidisciplinary teams. And we put together a jury of experts in the field, peers of these teams. So landscape architects, civil engineers, entrepreneurs who had experience to really vet those qualifications even further. And we ultimately, the jury selected three teams to move forward to stage two of the competition. Stage two of the competition started this spring. We ultimately had the entire competition process wrapping up last month in mid-July. But in response to input from the three teams that were selected, we ended up extending the time for them to work on their product because of all of the complexity. These teams were challenged with reviewing all of the master plans that the city has in place. So that included our water distribution plan. That includes our arts, culture, history, master plan, our multimodal plan, our urban forest plan, our existing comprehensive plan, the proposed draft updates to the comprehensive plan. The Leland Study completed last year. So they had to review all of these different plans. And we had them meet with the, all of the major developers downtown that had projects. We were successful in convincing all of those developers to put their projects on hold while we went through this process. And again, that's in response to public input about concerns about designs and site plans. And so developers were part of this process and submitted their site plans. They submitted their concepts for the teams to provide input and knowing that if they don't move forward quickly ahead of us and start pulling permits and we get to the point that we start making code changes that we are going to affect what they could potentially do in the future. So if they weren't interested in participating in the process, if they weren't interested in really creating a product that fit the character of the community, they would not have participated and moved through and started pulling permits under our current codes. So we have been successful in getting them to put things on hold. And so all of these teams reviewed their, their concept plans, their designs, and you could see, the public could see in their reports, started moving towards the development of design standards and what is likely to be probably future zone changes and code changes again to ensure that the private development that we see occurring in the downtown is complementary to the waterfront and what the city is doing along with the waterfront and also that it fits the historic character and feel of the community. We received the proposals from the three teams on August first and that included comprehensive program manuals as well as, as display boards, four display boards per team. And those were put online on our website. We also, for the last week and a half, have had public displays daily in City Hall. The mayor, myself and council president joined us last weekend. We're also down at Farmer's Market at Jeff Jones Square over the last couple of weekends with display boards, getting public input and encouraging the public not only to have dialogue with us, but also to complete surveys. We estimate that we probably had over four hundred people over the last two weekends, just on Saturdays. It was a pretty steady stream of people down there and we had the benefit this last weekend of POAC occurring too. So got input there as well. We received just over a hundred surveys from the public, which again, as we're doing our survey processes, that's pretty standard for what we see when we're putting a survey out unless we're talking about dogs as we've talked about in the past. But we did receive a hundred surveys. We also had some very thoughtful dialogue with members of the public. The majority of the surveys that we received in, in fact, over ninety percent of the surveys were from Sandpoint residents or individuals who live maybe outside of city limits, but they live in Bonner County and we are the county seat. Over the last two days, actually two and a half days, the jury was convened and they were reviewing the detailed public surveys, which included some ranking of how well the team, the teams met the goals, but they also had a series pages of public comments. So they considered all of the public comment, a review of the technical advisory group, our internal team who has given input as to whether projects are doable or not doable. And so tonight we have with us again, our competition manager, Don Stasney, to bring forward to council the recommendation, unanimous recommendation of the jury, which I think you'll hear from Don too, aligns very well with the feedback of the public as well as our technical advisory team. I would say across the board, there was strong support for this decision with all participating groups as to what was the team to move forward. And again, a reminder that this is moving forward. So now this is selecting a team who starts their process, working with the city and the community. And again, this isn't the end of a public engagement process. This will be just the beginning with the team undertaking a significant amount of work over the next month in refining their vision, which will ultimately, there will be public input as part of this. This comes back to council again. And then there will be further vetting moving forward, but this gets us down to a team that will be doing this work with the community and the city. But with that, I hand it over to you, Don.
If I can just interject with a comment briefly, excuse me, Don. I do want to make a comment on the purpose of this overall process and everything Jennifer said was spot on. However, I want to underscore that that there's more of an opportunity here than simply, you know, changing the zoning code here and there. Or looking at, you know, changes that we can make in our public infrastructure, say in accordance with the Parks Master Plan that we've already, that we've already passed here a couple of years ago. When we make a major public investment, we're also always looking at how can we stimulate economic vitality in our downtown core? How can every dollar that we spend, spend as a public entity also support downtown local businesses? How can we create more connectivity and mobility, particularly in our downtown core, which we are very blessed to have one of the most walkable downtowns with access to businesses and parks and areas of recreation and water access and which is just an incredible gift that's frankly, really easy for us to mess up. And so we got to make sure that any public investment that we make in infrastructure, that we do it right. How can we foster and stimulate better function downtown with our facilities, with our infrastructure? How can we encourage more recreational opportunities? Are there opportunities to via, to create more, to maximize cultural and social vitality downtown? So all of these are things that are taken very much into account when we're looking at a downtown master plan that are above and beyond what we would look at when we're looking simply at the transportation plan or when we're looking at the zoning code or, or the comprehensive land use plan or the Parks and Rec Master. But when we're looking at any of these individually, there's the opportunity that things are going to fall through the cracks. So this, the, this effort, the downtown waterfront design competition was an opportunity to look at all these efforts that we've made collectively and see how we can get a greater sum of all those parts or a greater sum collectively through this comprehensive design effort than we would get from the individual parts. And then when we craft that vision collectively, as we have, it creates this, this new vision that didn't exist before. And it gives us the opportunity to engage private development, develop. And it gives us the opportunity to engage private development, uh developers, private property owners. And say, look, this is a grand vision, can you help us implement this together? And so it gives us an ability and an opportunity to really mobilize private entities to get behind this vision. And we can activate private capital that, that otherwise we wouldn't have access to. So I think it's, it's a huge opportunity, um, it, it's an incredible process. And I feel very grateful uh to the council for, for supporting this process. Uh, to the jury for their efforts, to the uh citizens of Sandpoint that participated and giving us their feedback and the staff that contributed. Um, and Don and his team have done a fantastic job leading this effort. And with that, I will hand it over to you, sir.
Who has absolutely nothing to say after, but those two went at it. Uh, first of all, good evening, councils, honored to be before you one more time. Uh, I would like to just review a little bit about what has happened over the last um. Week, if, if I may, from the time or two weeks at the, of the time that the submittals came in. Um, and prior to that, we held a number of kind of one-on-one sessions with the various design teams that were selected. And as you remember, we selected three teams that were on the, on the board there uh earlier. Um, we uh invited them in for two-day briefing, which uh was uh here. In council chambers in which we were able to have them meet with our very, with our technical advisory committee. Uh, we also invited in uh certain developers, uh developers that were active in the area. Uh, and uh, others that, that might have an input into how we begin to grab into this, this very complex problem. You have a very, a small city here, but it's got a big city mind. As far as the complexity of things that you're doing to increase and ensure livability. And the things that, the values that you as a city, as a city, as a town hold dear. And it was, it was very important that we kind of begin to insert those. Belief in those values into the teams themselves, so they weren't just here doing another exercise. But they were doing here, doing the work that Sandpoint needed. Um, after the, the briefing, we did have a meet your designer night, if you remember that. In which we had each team get up in ten minutes about who they were. And what their understanding of the problem was and, and how they were going to go forward. So this is an opportunity for the public to see that these guys are something more, guys and gals are something more than just faces on paper. But people of substance and people of, of uh, unequal professional capacity, capability. And during the, the process that we went through, we had uh scheduled a first briefing. Or not, a mid-course review, in which we allowed each team to come in independently. And meet with our technical advisory group or, or um, people that, that would help us all the way through. To get kind of a one-on-one as to where they were going to make sure that they were addressing the right things. That they understood the, the plans and programs that were in place and how they were a part of that. After the first set of midterm or of, of mid-course reviews. We uh issued another statement, which basically came back and clarified to the teams. That uh, what we were really looking for was a workable kind of solution. That it wasn't just kind of throwing a new dream on the table, but it was how do we take what we have in place and build upon that? And this is a very important turning point, I think, in the competition itself that I wanted to share with you. We also then uh, uh, had a second mid-course review that originally was unscheduled. But it was as, as um, Jennifer says, it was because of the complexity of program. We felt we wanted to give them another chance to come in and talk about where they were going. And make them get assurance that they were in the right path and following the right, right road. Um, uh, after that, then we um, uh, set them out and we uh had a certain set of deliverables. That we expected from them and um, this is something I guess we've kind of honed over time about understanding. How the various pieces that they give us are used. One is the exhibit boards. Uh, exhibit boards are kind of a two-dimensional way of explaining an overall concept. The problem with the boards is if you have as many as you need to explain one of these concepts, you'd have boards all the way around the room. And it'd be very difficult for, for people to really get into them. But uh, the, I guess what I would say to you and the public is the boards are put together with their major kinds of, of ideas. Of what is there, and that's what is pictured on those boards. The subtlety of those ideas and how they link together, sometimes it doesn't come across on the boards themselves. We were able to put the boards out in public, in public display. And because of the current technology, we're able to do all this electronically as well and get comments back, as Jennifer said. And the comments that, that came back um, were um, quite thick. Um, and um, uh, that was, those were shared with the, the jury as well uh going forward. As far as the jury itself, we submitted, or we gave to the jury both an electronic copy and hard copy. Um, all the submittals um, a week ahead of, of the jury, actual jury session. So they had time to read through everything and go through it detail by detail by detail. Comparing between the, the three different uh submittals that we're in. Then we then brought the um, uh jury together on, on Monday afternoon. And we began to discuss about what people saw within the submittals themselves. And we kind of use a, a system of saying, give us the strengths and weaknesses you see within each, each uh area. And maybe even the categorization of how, how it might, might occur. And you'll see on the board uh up there, the evaluation criteria we asked them to, to look at. Uh, interpretation of the project, how, how did they really take this charge? And apply their disciplines to it and be able to do it. We had a set of adopted design goals, which you may, may or may not remember, eleven uh to start with. And we asked them to address those, both in their design work and what they presented, but also um. Uh, in a narrative about how did their scheme address these design goals? Um, we looked at the, because of the way that they responded. We look at the team's uh capability to continue on. That it isn't kind of a one-shot deal, but we're asking them to come in and be part of the Sandpoint team in moving things, things forward. We have the technical advisory committee's report. Again, it was done by our excellent technical advisory group. You guys are so fortunate to have the quality of professionals that you have at the city administration level. It is as good as I've ever been in, and I've been in some big cities with a lot of politics. And just great people that helped us all the way through and are still helping us go forward. Um, and then the public comments, as I said, we uh gave them our, our record. And asked them to read through the comments of what was, what was there and how to bring those together. So, so with those evaluation criteria and, and thoughts in mind, we then had each team come in and make a presentation. And we asked each one to uh limit their session to an hour and a half, forty-five minutes for presentation. We stressed forty-five minutes for conversation, so it isn't a grilling. It's, it's more a discussion of ideas and how you bring things together. We did those yesterday and went, went through each one. Uh, just adding to the portfolio, the things that the jury was, was considering. And then this morning, we, we sat down and, and uh, again, went through the submittals in a way of. Of strengths and weaknesses and, and what was there. And it was uh pretty clear to me as a facilitator that we were uh very close to a decision. So we uh continued, continued on and did a um, poll of the jury. And uh, the jury unanimously selected the GGLO team uh as. As, as the, the um, excuse me, GGLO and Bernardo Wills. Um, team as a one to proceed into stage three. Um, we are presently uh putting together a jury report. The jury report that we actually authored and Jennifer Manhard, my, my assistant, assistant here, associate here. Um, uh, puts together the overall report and then we submit it back to the jury for them to sign off on it. So they have another chance to see what that, that jury report uh says. The jury report then will be submitted to you, will be submitted to the, the city as far as going, going forward from this particular point. Um, I would like to also say that we have, um, really because of the interaction, I think, with the council early on. We realized that because of the complexity of the problem that was being uh given to the uh competitors. That we really wanted to have a stage three in this competition. Many times we cut it off at stage two, when we have one to, to work with. But stage three, we felt that there were so many details that really ought to be back and forth with, with the um, uh, with the administration. With uh your, your people within the, within the city that um, uh, we put in the stage three as a way to refine. The, what report they, they gave us to start with and to identify. And to clarify, I would say different, different problems that, that uh might have been a part of it. Uh, so the list before you right here is just a very short list. Of some of the things that we will be asking the, the stage three to address. And you will see and, and like I say, it's a short list. Uh, the, the actual report will have uh, much more in it about this. But it's, it's about the things that we really began to see both in their proposal. But also where we needed clarification or whether we needed uh modifications going forward. So at the end, in the end of October, we will basically have a um, operations manual, if you will. About a way to proceed in a number of different areas, that then we can begin to take it apart, piece by piece, project by project. And go, go move towards implementation. As was pointed out um, by one of the jurors today. That the selected team of GGLO and Bernardo Wills. If you, if you have a chance to read this, it is a, a terrific manual about the individual pieces and how you bring things together. Uh, and it may not be everything, it may not, you may not be able to realize anything. But it's put together in such a way that as you realize each increment, it adds to the overall whole. And maybe some things aren't, aren't able to be done. But uh, at least this is a guideline, guidebook, guidebook. I see it as kind of a roadmap in a way about how to proceed. And as Jennifer said, it will very much be tied into the redo of the comp plan and, and that, that development. So I would, I would say, just in, in summary, um, uh, I'm very pleased. And uh honored, I think, to be a part of this particular competition. As you all know, um, I have been at this a while. And um, uh, I have, don't think that I have seen another competition that is, is challenging. But also that can be as rewarding to a small community. I grew up in a small town of, the whole time I was growing up, it was six, six hundred and ninety-two, population six hundred and ninety-two. And it was that when I was born, it's when I graduated, when I came back from university, it was still six ninety-two. And I think today it's six ninety-two, but the idea of a small town. Uh, doing things and, and the relationships between small-town citizens is critical. You have a wonderful, wonderful place here. And my hope is through this competition, we will make it a better place. Not necessarily for the people there now, but the children of those that are, will be growing up here and staying here. I want to thank you for the opportunity of being a part of this.
Thank you, Don, I really appreciate that. And again, I just want to reiterate um, Don's guidance. Um, and Jen, his associate, uh, through this process has been brilliant. Um, and the, um, I'm also, I, I want to mention the jury that was uh selected to. Uh, to take us uh from stage one to uh selecting the team to move on to stage three. Um, performed beautifully, uh, they were all very professional, had a great insight and um. Just conceptual awareness of our community and, and the overall project goals and purpose. Um, and it was really an honor to work with them. And um, I'm, I'm very excited at the outcome and, and the product at this point so far.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, um, note for council and for the public, um, we had. Pretty good in-person participation yesterday at the jury presentations. It varied a bit from, from team to team and, and during times of the day. But we had people participating here in council chambers, members of the public in person as well as online yesterday. Um, and not everybody, it didn't work for everyone's schedule. And I know council members, it didn't necessarily work for all of your schedules. So uh, we do have our webpage updated, um, where we have all the information about the stage two, including the boards. Including the um, the project manuals that were submitted and that page also included. Um, through yesterday, links to the Zoom meetings for the presentations. That page has been updated um, as of this afternoon. And all of those team presentations are available on that same page. So it's at our website, sandpointidaho.gov forward slash stage two design. Um, and um, for those who watch our council meetings or planning and zoning meetings. All of our meetings that are recorded are also available on the city's YouTube um, page as well. And um, so those are also available through YouTube, so people who go and, and view our meetings that way. Um, but those uh jury presentations are available. And there was information, I think, that jury members heard and members of the public, there was a lot to this. And so in presentations, there was more to learn than what you could even see in manuals or boards. And um, those are available.
Great, thank you, Jennifer.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So Stan, I want to say thank you. And thank you to all the competitors and all those that participated. And I'm, I'm choosing to stay very positive in this aspect, but I'm going to make, just going to address this right out of the gate. After being up here for a, a little bit of time. We as council and community have issues that come up and it elicits an emotion in all of us. Uh, the boards did that, the engagement did that, the emotion is absolutely there. I appreciate that it's tempered with professionalism, with the staff that we have, with the people that we've contracted out. With those competitors that have come in here. I know that we are in good hands moving into whatever stage and as, as this develops. What, so this is an invitation to the rest of our public for those who um, are now becoming aware, this is their invitation. What I have seen with each one of our issues that we have up here is that we've got a segment of people, citizens, that, that don't care at all. They just, they don't. And then we have others that care, so much so that it's almost as if they're too close to the flame, that they cannot see. Much anything other than the heat and they burn themselves. Social media, Facebook is not official survey. So for the dialogue that, that occurs, I encourage for the future, instead of ranting and raving and being mad on Facebook. Apply that emotion, apply help in those surveys. So with those two groups that are on the sides of whatever issue, I invite whatever portion of people that are in the middle. That are either very busy raising their families, uh, just wanting to get more active in their community, but they're busy. And then there are those that are so interested and so uh involved. That I hope to see them in the seats and in other committees elsewhere. I hope to see them in the seats and in other committees elsewhere as we move forward. Then there's everybody else in the middle. This is the invitation to the middle to get involved, get engaged, get informed, and help us with this next most important step for the next, we'll just say the next generations, whether that's five years, whether that's ten years, whether that's twenty years, whether it's thirty years. Now is the time for Sandpoint to rise above and embrace some of the emotions that they may feel with the changes, the growth, the maturity of their town, of their small town. There is much love, there is much compassion, along with that elicits emotion. Great. I'm a very emotional person. It takes everything I possibly can to keep it together up here. I invite those that are like me to get here and start talking and participate. So thank you. Thank you for the competitors.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'll try to be brief here. So number one, thank you. I think what Shelby said to start us off about the competition was spot on. The economic vitality, the connectivity, as well in bringing together all our plans and our efforts over the course of the last several years into one cohesive concept, at least moving forward. Two, I'd like to kudos to the technical team. I know Don had said it as well, too, but I think we can see with some of the similarities in design, particularly the connectivity. I thought all three teams really got that and moved people around the downtown corridor from Fifth all the way down to City Beach and back again, which I thought was amazing. So kudos to you guys. A huge thank you to our community members, the developers, the business owners, the nonprofits, who have been so very patient with this process and accepting of this product. We many things are on hold right now until this design competition finishes up before we can start moving and before people can start developing as well, too. So thank you to everybody there. And I, just as Counselor Broat said, I I was hit with the shock and the wave of emotion when I first saw this open up. And I think my first visceral reaction was, oh, my gosh, this isn't our town, right? This looks crazy. And I really had to come back in, print off all the reports and go through each one of them to really art to understand and to really bring out my gratefulness for being on this council during this time, helping with the selection in terms of moving forward the design competition and what we could get out of this. We talked a little bit, Jennifer brought it up in terms of we, the community has spoken about a lot of the development that we've seen in town. And do we want more gazillion-dollar condos on every corner and every block? And we have the ability now to create the antithesis of that type of development, right? And will we start? Will we get some gazillion-dollar condos that might come out of this? Yes. But ultimately, can we sway a developer or a business owner to be more of a gathering space or nonprofit center or to be more festival-oriented and pedestrian-oriented connectivity? We've heard a lot from the community about safe bike paths going from, you know, Traverse Park or the school all the way down to City Beach. I think all three groups really hit the nail on the head with this as well, too. So I'm I'm very happy with what I've seen. I'm very grateful. And I was one of those people that it took me several weeks to get behind this idea and and really understand what it could do for our community. And I think back during the time when this community had to make the decision to get behind the Lions Club and to bring sand down to City Beach and understand what what our economy looked like that? What were the type of people that traveled north of Coeur d'Alene or traveled west to get here to make such an impactful decision that has forever since changed the landscape of this community? And I think that we're we're walking into an opportunity right now. If we if if we as a community come together, we get the engagement, we get the feedback, as Counselor Broat said, we have an opportunity to do something very, very amazing in our little town. And lastly, with all this said and these wonderful designs and what they look like and what may come of it, as an individual counselor, I'm very grounded and humbled into something that Counselor Groats says a lot is we still need drivable streets, flushable toilets, drinking water, safe walkways. And how are we going to collaborate with what we've seen here from the design competition and still make sure that we're giving our word that we're getting those things for our community members? And I think I'm I'm probably most optimistic about how that's all going to work together. So thank you all for your time and your efforts in this. We appreciate it.
Great comments, Counselor. Yeah.
I just want to say, being the oldest council member up here, I've seen life, change is inevitable. I mean, the only constant in life is change. This is an opportunity for us to control the change, participate in the change, and rather than have change happen to us. I'm very thankful that the developers have held off because, again, they could have gone ahead and not paid attention to anything that we asked them to do. But truly, this, I was excited as opposed to Counselor Dick, I was excited at all of the all of the drawings and concepts because I like change. I think change is good if it's done right, if it's controlled, if there's input from the community. Saturday, being there with a lot of the community members was very interesting. There are those, as Counselor Groat said, who hate everything. And they will always hate everything. And so we have to understand that, respect that, but also, again, change is going to happen. And we either get behind it and we embrace it and we we as a community control that change or we're going to get run over. And that's just not, that's just not the way to go. I've lived here for over thirty years and I love this community. You know, if change, if we didn't have change, we wouldn't have the byway. And with the all the traffic in town, if we didn't have the byway, oh, my gosh. It would be horrific. Jeff Jones Square and the Fountain, that's change. That was change. And so change can be good and it can be positive. And I really, you know, there were some comments that I really took to heart about one of them especially from a gentleman who said that before he knew who I was, he said, you know, the city council's all on the take. That's what this is about. And I said, really? And he said, yeah, don't you know that? I said, well, I'm city council president and I believe that's a lie. And so it was very interesting to hear that. It's like, where would you get that? We live in this community. We help make these laws. We have to live within this community. And certainly, we don't sit up here and think how we can ruin it for everybody. That's not our goal. Our goal is to make sure that we can keep our community and and again, have control over it. I read all the narratives. I thought they were amazing. And I thought if the community paid attention and really read the narratives, they would understand that each team, the directions that the stakeholder group put together for them, that they really adhered to that and they were very thoughtful about that. And I really appreciate it. And they had the expertise and the knowledge to move us through this. So I I'm very honored to be a part of this. I think, you know, between the staff and all the teams and Dawn and Jen and the council, I think we we did a terrific job. And again, hopefully, the rest of the community will see that. It isn't going to happen overnight. But we can control this change and sometimes change is really good. And I think that's where we're at now. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, as the youngest person on the I I've seen a lot of change as well over the years, and I've had to work through a lot of fears and concerns. And not all of it I've liked, but it is what it is. I am thankful that we chose G G L O because I felt like it was the most, although it's just a concept, I felt like it was the most local feel because I do believe there's a lot of fear of change and a lot of that changes. Fear of outgrowing us and I felt like this concept, at least this picture was more of what we have now. And I think that's great. So I'm thankful for that. And I just want to encourage all the citizens to continue to come and be involved. We hear you. Not all of us are on Facebook reading comments. So please come to the meetings, tell your friends to come to the meetings. We want to do the best to listen and this is a group effort. So thankful to be a part of it. It is hard. We will make mistakes, but please encourage your friends and families to be as respectful as possible, but come give their insights, please. Thanks.
Counselor.
Yeah. Everybody else has spoken. I I would like to, again, thank everybody. It's it's great that the different concepts were so diverse, way more diverse than I expected them to be. I expected them to be more convergent on similar themes. But I'm thankful that we saw the device diversity that gave us kind of more choices to consider. And I think the jury chose very wisely. So I agree with Joel on that. You know, when I look at it, I I I realize that, you know, some relatively small percentage of the vision outlined in that is public infrastructure. And I'd say a larger percentage is private infrastructure. And I I want to remind people, because I had this conversation with people at Jeff Jones Square and at the Craft Market the other day. They say and they they look at the plan and say, how are we going to pay for all this? That's going to cost us millions of dollars. What about our streets and our sidewalks? Well, the concepts in this plan are, first of all, every every proposal had a phased implementation plan. And every time we approach a phase of this implementation, we as a community have to make decisions about our limited resources. And if three years from now and we're looking at, I don't know, putting new pavers down at the farmer's market site to create more of a old town feel or whatever the 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 vision might be, we're just not going to do that because we adopted a plan in 2023 that said that we are going to do that. That's a decision that we're going to weigh against all the other needs that we have in three years. And and if our priorities as a community are to focus on potholes and sidewalks or, you know, putting turf at Traverse Park or something, we 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 can have that conversation when the time comes. So I think the impression is that when we adopt this plan, we're now going to do all these things. We we've seen enough times over the last few years that a plan once adopted doesn't mean that that plan will immediately be implemented or even ever be implemented. I hope that this plan is implemented. But where the money comes from, the conversations about when to spend that money and how much to spend, those are things that are all going to be open for public feedback as well. So fear not, like, we're not just going to rush ahead and and leave the community in the dust because we up here, who are all on the take, as you know, are are, you know, lining our pockets or whatever it is. These conversations and and the 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 public will be involved at every step of the way. So I I'm I'm a little assured of that. But back to the private investment side, I have a question for Don or Jennifer. Don talked about private developer engagement during the adoption or the development of the of the competition manual. And we know that some of the owners of downtown buildings, some of the owners of holes in the ground downtown and and whole blocks that have chain link fences around them, were involved in the development of the competition manual. What about in the last sixteen days? Have we heard feedback? Have we brought developers and the owners of these holes in the ground back to the table to see what their impressions are of the the plans that that were presented?
We have submitted all of the materials that we received from the the teams to the to the developers that participated. And as part of this stage three, we will be sitting back down with them and having individual conversations. You probably noted in Team C, G G L O and Bernardo Wills that was selected. They had recommendations for every single one of their developers on their site plan. And they also had recommendations down on Farman's Landing that may involve ultimately moving forward, reduction of mass and size of buildings down there. So those conversations will occur. And we are already working on scheduling those meetings. I would note the Carousel Group would be part of that as well. So you noted in the concepts, every single one of them considered the carousel and location for that. And so all of the all of the materials were forwarded on to them as well. So those meetings will be happening and including a meeting with the Kalispel tribe and really talking about history and how we further elements and be respectful to the the tribe as well. So we're in the process of doing that also.
Okay.
I'd also say it, Counselor, that you bring up a very important tool that we actually started with initiating in in Portland forty years ago. First time we build our downtown, rebuilding it again now at this particular point. But the idea of a public-private partnership of these three Ps that basically initiated up here in the north northwest and now spread across the nation, that the power of of collaboration between the public sector and the private enterprise is a tremendously powerful tool if it's aimed in the right way. And one of the things I think is going to come out of this competition and and what will come out of stage three is some very specific guidelines about how you really bring together private monies and public monies. And in what places do you need public monies and what what things can be done on on a private sector? One of our our jurors was from Portland and initiated the idea when we built Pioneer Courthouse Square of name a brick. You know, it's a simple little thing and everybody bought a brick for whatever it was at that point, fifteen dollars or twenty-five dollars, something like that. But it was a way for the public to both get an identity within the square as well as feel like they had contributed towards it. In that particular case, it is it is a huge amount of money. But what it what it meant to the community as far as ownership was a tremendous part of it. And I think that's those those are kind of the guidelines that we'd really like to follow through on as as this goes into implementation is thinking about not only what what it is you're doing or what the impact will be. And as you say, this is this is not something for tomorrow or next week, but it is basically working towards the next generation of what Sandpoint wants to be.
That said, though, you know, we look at what might we expect to see in the short term in terms of implementation. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we are moving into Phase Three of Downtown Revitalization next year.
That's correct.
Which every one of these plans included a concept for the block from Bridge Street to Pine Street. Can we expect to see the the final, the G G L O concept, the final version of that implemented as early as 2024, 2025?
That's correct. Yes. And that was, again, the intention of going through a process like this where we aren't just selecting off of examples of work elsewhere and competencies and capabilities of the team. It was or a submitter, it was taking them through a further vetting step, which we saw in Phase Two. And having a jury of experts is really looking at what they're proposing and the viability of it. And you're going to see in the juror report, there are a number of things that teams recommended and included in a vision, a concept that the jury said this isn't viable moving forward. But certainly in this case, and I I can speak to this, the team ultimately that the jury recommends moving forward with G G L O and Bernardo Wills, that was our one team that ran Stormwater Cauks, asked us for our traffic numbers. And so some of the visions and recommendations that they had, particularly on First Avenue, were taking into account rerunning all of our numbers. So some preliminary engineering conceptual development occurred. So yes, and that was next year in the approved budget from council, we do have dollars set aside for design of Phase Three of Downtown and that we specifically were holding off on that until after October because we anticipate that there will be changes. I think one of the changes that the public will be really open to, and I think we will see this moved further through Stage Three is that long-term concept for Bridgen first, you know, that was another one people loved or hated. This particular team had some recommendations about changes to that long-term concept. So again, there will be an opportunity for public dialogue. And this is conceptual and there will be an opportunity for public dialogue when we're actually in. I would also note relative to public-private partnerships in this particular team's manual as well as on their boards, they reflected a concept. They called it Cedar Street Terrace, next to the Cedar Street Bridge, the location of the old Arlo's building. We have been in conversations with that developer about an opportunity for public-private partnership that would allow for private development, but would he consider a public plaza dedication of property to the public? So what they are reflecting in there is a concept based on feedback from a developer who was open to conversations with the city to achieve public plaza, public access there and potentially public dedication of some of his property that currently is in private hands.
Yeah. And I would point out that my daughter loves the slide going down from First Avenue.
Don't we all?
Thank you.
Yeah, great, great comments.
Yeah, please. One more comment, please, Mr. Mayor. If you have a competition, it's natural that people think there are winners and losers. We don't believe in that in the competitions we have have run. We we believe that there are those that are selected to move on. And so that terminology is is very, very important. And as we said to the to the teams as they made their presentations yesterday, each one of them has made a tremendous gift to the city. We've paid them an honorarium, yes, but our records usually show that We've paid them an honorarium, yes, but our records usually show that people spend bill- in billable hours, sometimes between three to four times what they get in their honorarium. And so I I uh, believe very strongly that the teams, as they have given you their proposals, have given it with with respect and uh, basically have given a gift. And I would hope that everyone would appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, appreciate that, Don. And and to that point, um, each of those proposals um, had significant value that not only helped um, the jury kind of expand our minds and and ideas of what is possible and what is inspiring, but then it helped us inform uh, the selected team to um, how to improve their plan moving into stage three. So it it the whole process really did um, function as it was intended. Um, not only did we get three amazing proposals, but we're going to end up with a final product that is more than it would have been on its own. Um, and um, I can't tell you how excited I am at um, moving into this phase three, and I know uh, every member of the jury feels the same way. Um, it was a, it was a great uh, process today to um, make our decision and um, provide uh, recommendations going forward in into phase three and um, I hope that um, the council can support this decision. Um, with that, I want to open up the floor um, to the public that may want to provide any kind of public comment on this matter. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, would you have a couple of people who have signed up to speak? Kyle Schreiber?
Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident. And yeah, since we're talking about the city budget today, my first question about this project is, how much does it cost? Uh, not just to design it or build it, but to maintain it in perpetuity. Because I can think of a dozen things that Sandpoint needs more than this. And from past experience, it's clear that when it benefits a developer, somehow we always have the money. But that twenty-five K for the dog park is just incredibly elusive. Honestly, I think all these designs are way over the top and they all fail to capture what it is that makes Sandpoint charming. Nearly all these design features appear to be intended for tourists. Uh, but they will be subsidized by the residents who actually have to pay for them. I certainly support the concept of natural features um, using native plants, but the whole rewilding concept just feels like greenwashing, like the solar panels on the parking garage. Nice touch. Are there improvements that could be made? Of course, uh, moving the city beach boat ramp over next to the train tracks and thus further from the swim beach. Sure, that makes sense. But expanding the boat ramp and adding more trailer parking, have have you guys tried pulling out onto first from on the first from bridge lately? How many uh, boat trailers you want to funnel through there? Somehow we have the money to rebuild the bridge with some elaborate double deck, but uh, not enough to align the bridge with Tur- Church Street to make that intersection usable. Perhaps we can re- renegotiate that very unpopular land swap now that the developers are already failing to uphold their side of the deal. Look, a modest boardwalk that connects the powerhouse to Cedar Street Bridge and a few zoning tweaks uh, would go a long way to encouraging economic growth along our waterfront. And some natural catchment features that filter stormwater before it enters the creek would likely improve our water quality for kids playing along the shoreline. But we don't need to transform our town into another Aspen or Tahoe in order to accomplish those things. In fact, a recent study by Headwater Economics, who specialize in policy research specifically for the rural west, concluded that communities pay an economic and social cost for being popular tourist destinations. And that typical policies inadvertently make those problems worse. So please consider the social costs of workers pushed even further away and the economic impact of workforce shortages in addition to the budgetary impact to the taxpayers who subsidize it. Let's focus on the things that benefit this Sandpoint residents instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Madam Clerk?
Ken Keeler? He left.
Ken Keeler? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there was a hand raised online just a moment. Lynn Lanning? It looks like Lynn has decided not to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? All right. Hearing none, uh, counselors, any further deliberation or would anyone like to make a motion to advance uh, GGLO Bernardo Wills to stage three of the competition?
So moved. I'm sure some of the same.
I was just gonna make one final comment and it's, you know, I'm friends with Kyle, so I can respond, but um, you know, the the idea that, yeah, we don't have money right now to pay for a new bridge across Bridge Street or to put a pedestrian bridge from the, you know, Long Bridge path over to the beach. But one, one thing I I've learned in this role and in my work outside of city councils, that when you have a plan with an ambitious vision, it makes getting that money a whole lot easier. So if, when the time comes, because we know the Bridge Street Bridge does need to be replaced, having this plan adopted, putting a vision forward and said this, and and we we say, you know, whether it's to ITD or to the federal, you know, infrastructure dollars or it's private grant money. You know, we're going to get a much better product because we have a vision adopted that is ambitious and it's visionary. And it's not just going to be another bridge that looks exactly like the Bridge Street Bridge, for example. Um, having a a vision for better pedestrian connectivity that's been vetted by the city and um, is ambitious, is going to allow us to go out and submit grant applications. We've seen hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars come in in grant applications because we have adopted plans of the city. We are getting a splash pad and a a a a brand new accessible play structure at Travers Park because we had a concept that was adopted in twenty nineteen that envisioned a better play area at Travers Park. Six hundred thousand dollars, not a dime of that out of taxpayers' pockets to help pay for that. So if we don't have these plans in place, good luck getting those grant funds. Good luck getting, you know, something better than what we have now. Um, because we know that a lot of our infrastructure is outdated, needs to be replaced, and we have pretty crummy connectivity in town. But once these plans are in place, it's going to open up doorways for opportunities for funding that we wouldn't have and will place less burden on taxpayers in the future because we've come together as a community to adopt this ambitious vision. So thanks, Kyle.
Thank you for those comments, Counselor. Appreciate that. And not to mention, of course, the seven point four million that was donated for the indoor sports facility that's been called for by this community for many, many years.
Which we would not have received if we had not spent a relatively small amount of money and eighteen months of our citizens' time engaging in the development of the Parks and Rec Master Plan.
That's right. Um, you know, I recall, um, we have uh, Bridge Street is a failing bridge.
Yeah.
It scores, um, it's the uh, but it's it needs uh, repairs anyway, which are uh, budgeted for, but that's the kind of project where we can, the city can put forward seven point seven five percent funding and um, get the rest of that funded through uh, pass through uh, federal and state funds. Jake, I'm looking at you, buddy. We need your help. Um, so there's all kinds of uh, opportunities to leverage public funds and other funds out there, philanthropic funds. Um, right now, there's more uh, on our jury, there we happen to have the Regional Director for I I D E Q. Um, and he's saying where he's been his, you know, twenty, going on thirty years, his career at IDQ. Um, and he's had, you know, his typical annual budget is in the several hundred thousand. Um, these last few years, he's getting close to retirement. Um, he's looking at um, uh, at at spending uh, close to fifteen million dollars because that's the kind of budget capacity that's available uh, in the wake of all the COVID uh, stimulus funding that we've had um, over these last few years and going forward into twenty twenty-six. So there is money out there that can be leveraged, all kinds of money, and you're a hundred percent right that if we don't have a vision, none of it is accessible to us. If we have a clear vision and a clear direction in where we're going and why, and we and we have uh, public support uh, behind us, um, we we can access all kinds of funding for whatever that vision may be. Not to mention, as you also appropriately mentioned, is leveraging uh, private capital, leveraging um, investment from developers, from private property owners that also have a stake in this. They also want to see um, their streets, their public uh, uh, public uh, ways um, access to water. They want to see those kinds of improvements too for their residents, for their uh, tenants, et cetera. Um, so um, I agree with you a hundred percent, and I appreciate you pointing that out. Um, the other thing that I want to mention on the funding, and this is certainly a conversation that um, we have many times, um, and we're certainly going to continue to talk about this in the future, um, as this uh, process comes to a close and in the in the coming years. Um, I'm sure many of the public are familiar with the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, that is the uh, the Downtown Urban Renewal Agency was created in two thousand and five. That has been the entity that has funded reconstruction of our downtown public right-of-way, our downtown streets, our downtown sidewalks. We're now coming to a close of that uh, twenty-year vision. Uh, with the last component of that being uh, what was mentioned earlier by Jennifer, that last uh, southern portion of First Avenue from First and Bridge uh, south to First and Pine and maybe a little bit beyond that. Um, and that will be completed, that that process is going to start next summer with design and uh, completed shortly thereafter. That will close the Downtown Urban Renewal Agency. It is anticipated that implementation of this plan, the downtown design uh, downtown waterfront design will primarily be funded. Uh, in in addition to all those other funding opportunities that we've already discussed, will primarily be funded by a new Downtown Urban Renewal Agency. So this isn't a new tax. This isn't money that you wouldn't otherwise be paying as a Sandpoint taxpayer. This is a reallocation of existing tax money that that we're spending anyway. So it's a matter of, uh, do we want to uh, do we want to use this money to implement a a a vision that uh, the community is um, excited about, that can uh, provide all the benefits that we've talked about here this evening? Or um, do we want to allow those uh, funds to go other, other allocated in other ways? Um, another thing that I I just want to mention on this topic, you know, we heard a lot about streets and and sidewalk improvements, and and that was certainly um, one of the areas that I know the public is is really um, excited about when we're looking at big infrastructure uh, projects and potential uh, large funding um, projects. Uh, the voters recently approved a one percent local op- local option sales tax that has quadrupled the annual budget that the City of Sandpoint has for improving our downtown streets. It has multiplied the annual budget that we have for improving our sidewalks by thirteenfold. So we have taken this, this council and the and our voters have taken huge steps in the last couple of years to dramatically improve uh, our streets and our sidewalks. Um, so um, running a city is a complex business. There's a lot of priorities, a lot of important things that need to be considered, that need funding, that need attention. Um, and uh, we as a council uh, have to do our best to try to appropriate, appropriately allocate those funds uh, across a wide range of priorities. Um, and um, and I think at the same time, we still need to have a clear vision of where we're headed and hopefully an inspiring, inspiring vision that can um, bring us to a future where we see more uh, prosperity, uh, better connectivity, better recreational opportunities, better livability in a city that we all love. And and I think that's what we're heading towards uh, with this uh, design competition as we move forward into stage three. And with that, I would sure appreciate uh, the council's um, passage of this motion. I think we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is that right? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have a, we have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Okay.
Yeah, please.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Booker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor, uh, Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Does anyone need a break?
Sure.
Can you take five minutes? Go ahead. This one's for you. All right, we're reconvening here at seven twenty-two. The next item under Old Business is Council's Consideration of a Contract Award for the Twenty Twenty Three Sidewalk Improvements Project. On November, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, Sandpoint voters approved an extension of the city's existing tourist lodging occupancy tax to December thirty-first, two thousand and thirty-five. An increases tax from seven percent to fourteen percent as approved by voters in two thousand and twenty-two. Half of the oc- half of the occupancy tax revenue collected shall be used for street pavement, ceiling widening, reconstruction and associated stormwater infrastructure, along with pedestrian priority network improvements, including sidewalk and pathway maintenance, reconstruction and extend- extensions to provide connectivity and increase accessibility and safety under the Americans with Disabilities Act. As reflected in the meeting materials provided, the two thousand and twenty-three Resort City Tax Project includes sidewalk improvements at locations identified within the network improvements planned for the east side of Lavina Ave, between Ontario Street and Erie Street, the east side of Florence Avenue between Erie Street and Michigan Street, and Large Street between Boyer Ave and Fourth Ave, excluding Fifth Ave intersection for two thousand and twenty-three. As a result of this project's sidewalk that is damaged and deteriorated, non-ADA compliant, contains tripping hazards or has been lifted by tree root growth will be removed and replaced. With the bid process complete, council will now consider awarding the contract for this project to be to responsive and responsible bidder, Sunray Enterprises LLC, who submitted the lowest bid in the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars. Does council have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Um, okay. First question. Some of these uh, improvements, one in particular on east side of Lavina involved, this might be for Eric or Brandon, involves um, roots lifting up the sidewalk in places. I li- I went and looked at that. Um, my, my street has many of those, but I'm wondering what what do the contractors do in that case? Because there's so much concern about, you know, large trees, heritage trees. Will the roots be shaved down? Will the sidewalk be rerouted around the roots? How do we protect trees in our public right-of-way?
So there's um, there's numerous options to protect trees in our public right-of-way. In this case specifically, um, we are choosing to just elevate our sidewalk above the tree roots.
Can we maintain ADA compliance?
We can.
Okay.
Um, and that's a tricky thing in certain situations, but in this case, that is not an issue.
Okay.
Um, Christine can probably speak to that a little bit more detail than I can, but generally um, for ADA compliance, only one half of your um, slope has to be in compliance. I'm going to butcher this language, so bear with me. Um, so we can meet accessibility on one side and that is um, appropriate enough, given the constraints that we have. The constraints that we have in that situation, you saw it, uh, counselor, is um, we have a a homeowner's driveway right on the opposite side of that, which means to actually grade that to be ADA accessible in that situation, we would have to grade our sidewalk back into the private driveway, which obviously is problematic. So in that scenario, um, we're still in ADA compliance. It's not non-compliant. Um, but we'll have a little bit steeper side on one side. In this case, it's the south side. Um, and it would be shallower and flatter on the north side. To answer your original question about tree roots, um, in this case, we're lifting our sidewalk above the tree roots. Um, there's other options. If our right-of-way is wide enough, we can just avoid those tree roots and jog the sidewalk around them. In this case, we can't do that because our right-of-way is too tight, so we would be protruding into private property if we were to do that. Um, there's additional options as well that have to do with more um, engineering-type perspectives. Um, so there's engineered soil, engineered fill that you can remove what is existing around tree roots and then replace with engineered fill. What that does is it provides more oxygen to tree roots. Killing trees is starving them from oxygen. That's the process. So in an engineered fill situation, you're providing that oxygen to maintain the trees. Um, to my knowledge, we have not used that scenario in the s- in the city at this point.
Okay.
Um, it tends to be expensive. It tends to be um, primarily beneficial in like a downtown area. So if we had that situation and, you know, one of our streets adjacent to downtown, that would be a good solution in that area, especially if you're in tight quarters and you don't have a lot of room to work around. Um, but was that explanation um,
Yeah.
to answer your question or?
For sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I- Yeah, I just elevating. That's just a concept I wasn't necessarily aware of.
And sorry for all the extra words as well.
No, it's fine. Yeah, elevating would have been fine.
I wanted to make sure you had a full understanding.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I could insert for just a second, a little bit of a kudos to our staff and back to that many people don't know. So we have both of our construction managers up on these last two agenda items and they're construction managers, but we are super fortunate at this city with the level of technical knowledge and education that we have with our staff. So what you're hearing and where we've changed practices, Eric's background is and training is as a landscape architect. And he's actually in the process of getting his licensing and Holly, our other construction manager is an engineer. So in terms of how we're approaching our projects in consideration, I don't think that the city historically in the past, we've had the level of credentials that we have been so fortunate to have on our team right now. So when you look through our city right now, we have three engineers on staff at the city and two of our staff members in the process of getting licensed and have the full educational background and experience in landscape architecture, but also in the process of getting licensed, which gives us the ability to have them stamp plans themselves. So just want to note that for council and for the public on the background of our team members.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And I do have one or two other questions. Eric, I was looking, I, I was looking at the budget book for two thousand and twenty-four and we currently have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted for sidewalk improvements from the local option tax, the lodging tax for next year. But on the description of the project, it describes this very project for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. It seems like most of this, I think the total bid between the, the, the with the base bid and the alternates was around two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars or so. So there's, there's two components of this project that aren't going to be funded this year. Could you talk a little bit about, are we going to prioritize those bid options or bid alternates A and B for like the first projects we do next year? So that, for example, we can connect all of the west side of Lavina. We're paving two hundred and five feet of Lavina in front of the Washington Playfield right now, but there's still three gaps in, in no sidewalk between Erie and Ontario. So will we address those like as soon as possible next year to?
We, we will, and those will be our first items up for two thousand and twenty-four improvements. So to, let me take a step back and give you a little bit of background to tell you how we got here and why we made the decisions we did as far as what we're doing this year. We had to prioritize. We knew we had, you know, two sides of Lavina, you know, the east side and the west side. We had two sides of Florence, the east side and the west side, and the south side and the north side of Larch up by Super One. All of those sidewalk improvements are wildly in exceeding of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, probably close to double. So when we were deciding what we were going to improve this year, we were looking at, of course, our pedestrian priority network, which is where these projects came from in the first place. And how are we getting people from south to northeast to west or to Super One in the case of Larch? So we, we were trying to make the most benefit with the money we had this year. So we selected, for example, the east side of Lavina and the east side of Florence because we could improve the most property in those areas and still provide continuous sidewalk. So part of the reason we left the west side of Lavina out, for example, with the exception of that little corner right on the north, northwest corner there, is because there is so much infill required, that takes a bigger chunk of our budget. So we wouldn't have been able to make connective, connected sidewalks elsewhere, perhaps on Florence or Lavina. So we had to make some decisions on that. That being said, two thousand and twenty-four will finish everything that was not included in this bid. The west side of Florence, the west side of Lavina and the Fifth Avenue intersection at Larch, and there's some additional work up at the Larch area as well. So it, it was kind of prioritizing and you, you mentioned our two thousand and twenty-four budget as well. I would love to have just been able to award all of this and not have to break it up into multiple pieces. But being that we're in fiscal year twenty-three and that money doesn't become available until October first, trying to fit this project in this fall, we just had to, you know, bid with what we could actually accomplish this fall and, and award what we could accomplish this fall and we'll pick up and tackle the rest next, next year.
And I, I heard from our finance director that it's possible that come October first, if our hotel tax receipts exceed what we budgeted for this project, we could modify this contract to do some of that additional work this year?
We could.
Okay.
And that, of course, is weather dependent. Getting into October, we, you know, October tenth could have a foot of snow on the ground. But if the weather is in our favor, we could absolutely do additional work this fall.
Final, final question. When, I don't know if this is for Jennifer, you, when can we expect to see the projected projects beyond the completion of this project? Because if we're budgeting three hundred and fifty thousand for sidewalk improvements next year, certainly we can do this and more. Are there other blocks in our pedestrian priority plan that we think we'll be focusing on next year?
Yes. So at the time that we came out with the proposal of increasing the resort city tax, we had put before voters to our five-year plan of what projects we would complete and then the inclusion of, you know, all the different projects along our pedestrian priority network over the twenty years. But we have specifically identified the projects for the five-year and that's still available up on our website. And again, it's funding dependent. So we are budgeting, we have included in our budget an amount that we know we reliably can expect to receive from the resort city tax. But again, with bed tax and fluctuations in tourism and the potential of the hotel coming down next year at Edgewater, there are some unknowns. And so we also do a set aside in our budget that if more revenues come in, then we can do exactly what Eric's proposed here. So we went out to bid for a larger project, including added alternatives, knowing we could, we had the funds for a base bid, but we might be able to add to it with added alternatives. So we'll be able to better assess that as we get into the next couple of months. The increase in the resort city tax was effective January first of this year. In first year, getting everybody on board, reporting, remitting appropriately is always a little bit of a process. So this is probably our more, most flexier of all of the years, but and we right now have, we collect a month in arrears. So we've collected through June and our peak times for bed tax dollars comes in June, July and August, with really July and August being our biggest months. So we'll reassess as we get into the end of this month and dollars come in for July, if we're in a position to just then make an amendment to this contract to do added alternative and add more scope going into this fall. I would also know adding on to what Eric mentioned in terms of priority areas that were identified. There was a team walkthrough of this area identifying what would be the priority projects for this year with limited dollars and then what we would roll over into next year. And Eric, obviously, as our construction manager, leading this project was on that walk as well as Christine Coolman, who is our ADA coordinator in addition to our building official and also Aaron Billings with the school district, Lake Pondry School District, and responsible for safe routes to school was a part of that walkthrough. So that's how these projects were identified, what would be this year versus next year, what was really the priority for us to tackle.
And Jennifer, can I just add something real quick? Part of the reason why we made some of the decisions we did was exactly that walk with Aaron and Christine and figuring out how we can make the most improvement with the amount of money we had. But there was additional things that came up as well. If you're familiar with Lavina right by Washington Elementary and on the northwest corner of Lavina, right by the school, there's that empty field, that's school property. And the school uses that for classes and various things throughout the day. When we were out there walking with Aaron, Aaron said, hey, we use this and there's no sidewalk that runs on the north-south length of that. We use this and it's a problem getting students over here. So we're like, oh, we didn't even know you used that. Like, we didn't know the school used this property. Well, can you guys put this stretch of sidewalk in as a part of this? Well, sure. I mean, that makes absolute sense. So that was like part of the process, how we decided that. And, you know, we're being good neighbors to the school district, but it also just makes sense.
Yeah.
And we have a pedestrian crossing right there. It's striped. And if students are going across there anyway, we want to make the safest route possible for them to get there. So, you know, those little items, they may not sound like a big deal while we're discussing them in here, but to the school and to the, you know, schoolchildren that are there, that's a huge deal. So as we're prioritizing these and making these decisions in future years, those are the sort of things that I'm thinking about and that I think we're all thinking about.
Wow, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yeah.
Two things. Is Sunray the same contractor that we used for the school walk or the sidewalks on Division? Okay, so I would like to say good kudos to that individual. If it's the person that I think it is, it's one man, just machine that can get things done. And I work in all these areas. I really appreciate the efficiency and the effectiveness of how that previous project worked. And I'm encouraged that this is the same individual that won this bid moving forward if we decide to vote this through, as well as our last agenda item, I think is going to be a hot topic for conversation. This exercise here to show the collaboration, the expertise, the community involvement, the engagement, the listening to the concerns. Hats off to you for hiring these folks, for you guys with your expertise, and we have much work to do. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Al Schreiber.
Hello, Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident. A few weeks ago, I spoke about the need to be more strategic with our limited sidewalk funding. If you recall, I gave an example of what not to do. Don't focus on bringing a single block up to complete street standards when the connecting streets have no pedestrian infrastructure at all. Instead, focus on continuous thoroughfares that actually connect people to places. Apparently those words fell on deaf ears because here we are spending our entire yearly sidewalk budget on streets that already have sidewalks on both sides. And yes, I know what a harrowing experience it is walking along Larch from Pitt to Boyer, which is exactly why I implored this council to separate pedestrians from car traffic rather than forcing them to clash by only offering pedestrian routes along the busiest car routes. Was any thought put into where pedestrians will go after running that gauntlet? There are no sidewalks whatsoever along Larch West to Boyer or anywhere in the rest of the surrounding neighborhood, for that matter. And to correct the mayor, the voters actually declined to pass the sales tax referendum. And when we ask ourselves, why? Was it because our residents are opposed to investing in our community? Or was it because voters think the city does not make smart use of taxpayer money? Well, here we are, another council meeting without an agenda item to amend the multimodal transportation plan and another example of the flaws in that plan that will cost the taxpayers another quarter million dollars. We don't need to hire another expensive consultant from some out-of-state metropolis to write us a plan on how to turn our walking town into their car-centric nightmare. Just listen to the people who live here and use common sense. We can do better than this. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
There is no one else who has signed up to speak on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution awarding a contract to two thousand and twenty-three sidewalk improvements project, city agreement A twenty-three dash three one seven zero dash four to Sunray Enterprises LLC. Is there a motion? Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Grove.
Yes.
Motion passes. For the final item under old business this evening, following council's August second approval of the memorandum of understanding with Idaho Transportation Department, for the US two Pine Street Traffic Signal Project, staff seeks approval of a contract for design of phase one of the short-term east-west connection plan and also to submit an application seeking funding from ITD Strategic Initiatives Credit Program. And now you have the floor to construct, construction manager Holly Ellis.
Thank you. So tonight, we're here to talk about the east-west connection short-term plan, specifically phase one, which is the Pine and Fifth Traffic Signal Project. So again, these two actions before council, the first is to get into a design agreement with Welch Comer in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars for design of the east-west connection short-term plan. And second is to authorize staff to submit a strategic initiative grant for this project. If awarded the grant, we also have some opportunities to do additional pavement improvement work, but we'll get into that. This concept you've seen before, this is in our adopted multimodal transportation master plan. What's highlighted in yellow is the first phase. So the improvements before you tonight would be to convert to Pine Street to a two-way street. To do this, we relocate the traffic signal from church and move it to Pine. And the third improvement listed here is to convert six and Euclid to a right-in, right-out intersection to limit movements there. I'll also note also in our multimodal transportation plan that Pine Street is noted as an arterial street. It's also a major, it's a truck route. So the existing condition, what's happening today? We're receiving multiple comments from the community and this dates back to when the traffic signal was originally moved from Pine to Church in two thousand and fifteen, I believe. There are concerns with cut-through traffic in South Sandpoint. There are lots of frustrations about the signal timing at the church light. And there's also frustrations about one-way traffic on Pine. The key issues that were identified in the multimodal transportation plan, hearing these comments from the community, are that Pine is limited to one-way eastbound traffic. This encourages cut-through traffic in South Sandpoint. There's a need for a main thoroughfare on to east-west connection between US two and ninety-five. And then the, the final key issue is that the fifth and church signal is in close proximity to Cedar. So it, it makes timing difficult and that's what's causing a lot of spillback into downtown during peak hours. So the, the proposed improvements to mitigate these issues is to convert Pine Street back to two-way traffic to put a traffic signal at Pine and Fifth, remove the light at Church and Pine, or Church and Fifth, excuse me, and convert that to a stop-controlled intersection. The balled out, bobout would be removed from Pine Street on the northeast side. With this project, there would also be pedestrian and some minor stormwater improvements. The, the benefit to the community is that east-west can, east-west cut-through traffic in South Sandpoint will be alleviated. Safety will be improved, wayfinding will be improved, and we'll have better spacing between our traffic signals, particularly Cedar and Pine has a better distance than Church and Cedar, Cedar on Fifth. This figure shows the process, showing where we've been, where we are and where we're going. So in blue, that shows council action items. Highlighted in yellow are opportunities for public engagement and outreach. So we have two, in addition to tonight, we have two upcoming council meetings. And we'll also do public outreach in the form of an open house this winter. So going back during the development of the multimodal transportation plan, when this concept was developed, a lot of community input went into the project and concept development as well as an intersection level of service analysis. And with that, there were also traffic counts. So moving to today, we have a request before council to get into design. If we take the next step and get into design, the first thing we'll do is get topographical survey. We'll look at, can we use the existing traffic signal and equipment? That will be a huge cost savings. Uh, we'll also determine the geometry of the intersection, how many lanes there will be, what pedestrian improvements will do. What is stormwater, what needs to be improved? Um, once preliminary design is complete, it comes back to council again. We request to finalize the design and go out to bid. During final design, we finalize details, finalize spec- specifications, that's the time that we do our phasing plan, signal sequencing. We prepare a bid package and we go out to bid. Uh, before we go out to bid, we are, once we go to bid, we come back to council and request award of a construction contract. Schedule and budget, so at the last council meeting, city council approved an agreement with ITD. So that we could work with them through the design of this project. Um, the signal is, the fifth is an ITD road. Um, it is also a light that belongs to ITD. So Sandpoint is moving the light, funding the move of the light, but it will remain to be ITD's signal. Um, the, the reason that we're paying for it again is just because it's a city requested project. That's why Sandpoint is, is funding it. So today's action, we'll start the design, we'll continue design through the winter and then we'll continue with public outreach efforts. We'll be back in, what I'm hoping is January of the very first of twenty twenty-four with a request to go to bid. And, um, we'll get our bids out. There will, there could be some, um, material procurement, so fall of twenty twenty-four is what we're targeting for the actual installation of the signal. This project is budgeted for in fiscal years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. But as I noted, there's an opportunity for a grant. So there is a strategic initiatives grant, um, by the state. Uh, and if we were awarded the grant, the, the grant could fund entire construction of this project. And do some additional pavement rehab on Pine Street.
Is there a match on that grant?
There's no match. So this is a one-time state general funds grant. It is for roadway and project, roadway and transportation projects. It is not eligible for bridge or pedestrian projects as there are other grants available for those types of projects. So if we were to, uh, be awarded this grant, we would do additional. Uh, pavement work on Pine Street and rehabilitate the road from Fifth Avenue to Second. And the reason we would go to Second is it would tie in when we go to phase three of the downtown project. It would, we'd have some nice new pavement along that entire corridor. If we do not get the grant, I think I skipped this piece, um, this project is funded by City Impact Fees. Which are provided by developers.
And it wouldn't include the level of pavement rehabilitation, correct? That's grant dependent.
That's right. So the pavement rehab is contingent on receiving the grant. And again, this is the requested action before you.
Okay, council, any questions?
Indeed. Um, I, I want to comment on one thing. So right now, Pine Street is designated, uh, certainly with, as this. Um, amendment happens, Pine Street will be designated as a truck traffic route. And, um, the, one of the first slides you showed had key issues that were ele- elements that we heard from the public. And certainly one of the, uh, number of the comments that we heard from the public at the last meeting. Was, um, about truck traffic on Pine Street and how can we get truck traffic off of Pine Street? How could we use signage and enforcement to encourage that truck traffic to go? Um, north, uh, north, uh, yeah, I guess north on, uh, Fifth Avenue and then connect on to ninety-five. Up, uh, north of, of Fifth and, um, south of, uh, Ponderay. So, um, I know, uh, councillors felt passionate about that as well, a number of members of the public spoke to that. Um, I'm wondering if it's, uh, possible to include that as a, um, design consideration. As we move into design, uh, with this grant, in our agreement with ITD. To have that be a, um, design consideration.
It, it hasn't been considered to date, it. And it, we haven't, so we do have an MOU with ITD, so we could have a conversation with them on what. It would take to take trucks off of Pine and what that would mean for signage and their truck routes. Um, what we, what we don't have and what we would need is some data to support it. Uh, Sandpoint often makes data-driven decisions as does ITD. It, it might be difficult to enter those conversations without that data, but we could certainly start that conversation and we can start that data collection.
And, and can you tell me a little bit more about that? What kind of data would need to be collected in order to move in that direction?
So we would have to have an understanding of how many trucks are on Pine. Right now, it, it's not the primary route, uh, folks are taking Church or perhaps First and Cedar. And I mean, folks, I mean, the trucks. Um, once we convert this to two-way traffic, that those truck volumes are going to change. We don't know what they are right now. Um, so it, so our data would be incomplete if we were to look at what's the truck volume right now. I think this could be. Um, if, once we move the signal, we could look at how many trucks are on Pine. With it, without having moving the signal and not having Pine be two ways, we're not, we wouldn't, we were go to. If we were to count the trucks right now, we wouldn't have a full picture of what that volume is. Um, so it, it would make sense to wait for this project to be complete, see how many trucks are on Pine. Um, collect that data. The other piece that we would look at is level of service at the intersection and system-wide. Um, so if we say trucks can't be on Pine Street. Trucks are going to have to choose an alternative route and that's going to impact other intersections. So it would be important to understand what that truck movement is going to do to our system elsewhere. Um, so we could, we could do studies and models. Um, is, if the request would be that we work on this prior to moving the signal. Um, it would really be reliant on models. If we did this project, we could use real, real counts to make our decisions versus just relying on models.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, yeah. I'm, I'm just curious what, how does a data indicating the amount of trucks on Pine Street? Why does that matter if we know that, and this was Councilwoman Rule's point, why she, why in fact she voted against moving forward with this two weeks ago? If we as a community decide that we don't want that to be a primary truck route. And common sense says that once it becomes easier to use Pine Street, truck volume will increase on Pine Street. In fact, you just said that. It, we know that at present, local community members are telling us that there's too much truck traffic on Pine Street. It's, it's hindering economic development and quality of life for the people who live along there. We know it's going to increase. Yet, our, our contract today says, you know, redesign the northeast corner to accommodate new westbound traffic, including trucks. So we're making a decision tonight to engineer this for trucks. When there's momentum in our community to re-designate this as a, I don't want to say local street. Cause it would still likely be a collector, but perhaps downgrade it from an arterial to a collector. And I also had a, had just a, a question, I, I think I know the answer to this, but this is not highway two. Or is this highway, is Pine Street highway two? Do you see what I'm saying? I, I, cause you know, I think highway two is Fifth Avenue, correct? So this is a cut-through, this is a shortcut the truckers take at present. They're not on the highway when they're on Pine Street. Am I correct in that?
You're, you're correct, uh, but Pine is designated as a truck route.
I, I understand that, which is why we tolerate it in our community, but it's not a highway. It's not ITD. So I, I also had a question about the grant we're applying for, the one point five million dollars. Do you mind going to that slide?
Sure.
Um.
And I can, I can answer your, your question about, um, the truck turns and how we, there's two ways on, um. When we design this turn in the northeast corner, we can accommodate trucks and we can design for trucks. If you design for trucks, you're going to have a really wide radius. The alternative is we can accommodate trucks, so a truck can still make that movement, but it's not as wide of a radius. So, so that would be the approach that we would take there. And then I, I do have this, uh, grant. Slide up for you.
Okay. Um, one, one, I guess the question I have about this grant is, does our accepting this money in some way commit us to maintaining this as a truck route? Uh, because it's not highway two, this is not ninety-five, this is a local street that's the city maintains. This grant doesn't only, it cannot, cannot only be expended if we designate this, for example, a. You know, a section of highway along Pine Street, correct?
No, the, the purpose of the grant is for local roads.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so. Again, my, my original question was, why does the data matter if we know that we already have too much truck volume? And our, and we, and we are, and there is momentum in our community to perhaps re-designate this as a non-truck route.
So there's, there's two pieces of data. One is, what is the truck volume? ITD is going to ask for that and we can, we could probably have an engineer help us model something and give us numbers. Um, the other piece of data is understanding what the level of service and what the counts are going to be. Or, um, what the delays will be at other intersections. And so that, that's looking holistically system-wide, not just set fine. So if we take, if trucks were removed from Pine, they're going to take alternative routes. That could be Division, Boyer, Fifth Avenue to get to Ponderay and come back down or the reverse. So there's, there's impacts to our system that I want to just be sure that we understand. Um, I, I think this could be perhaps a parallel effort. That we get this engineer on board and we have them take a closer look at what this impact could be. Uh, but I would be hesitant to, to say that it would be an appropriate outcome without having more data in front of us right now. To say that it would be appropriate to just take trucks off Pine. I know we want to get there, but I know that, uh, there's. Um, a lot that goes into it, looking at our system.
Yeah. Yeah.
I hear you. And per our last conversation at last meeting. Uh, I'm not going to speak for this body, but I can speak for the body from what our conversation was from last meeting. We want to protect the integrity of that three to four blocks and not have truck traffic. This could be, we want our cake needed to, for sure, we get that, but that's why we're up here. We want better conductivity, we want to inhibit cut-through traffic. We do not want Pine to have a truck focus regardless of its designation. And, uh, at some stage in this, because I think we're clear. If the effort of more than just signage, but deregulating that as a truck. Route is what our conversation last meeting had intended. Um, I do not know what the support for this agenda item moving forward. If this confirms that Pine is going to continue to be designated as truck traffic. We do not want, and we have heard that we do not want truck traffic through Pine in this section.
So then the next step or what we'd need to do is to amend the multimodal transportation plan. Where we have a truck route figure that would need to be amended.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Council may ultimately decide, um, after the data comes in. That you understand the impacts of truck traffic moving to different areas and what it's going to do to intersections and what it's going to do to those streets. And still determine off of that, that you don't want Pine Street to be a truck route. I think what the data is going to tell you is when you make that decision, what is the impact going to be to other streets? Our slated improvements for Division Street are also based on limiting truck traffic on there. And what may very well happen is when you, um, you. Determine that Pine Street is not going to be a truck route. You may be driving more trucks over on Division where we also have safety concerns with trucks and the schools. So what the data is going to tell you is where those, those impacts are going to move. And ultimately inform the decision as to, does another street become a truck route? Do you want to further limit down? And maybe you're going to do, ultimately determine not on Pine, not on Division. And we understand impacts and want to push it all on to Fifth Avenue. But with that data, it's going to tell you where the impacts are going to be. And it isn't going to tell you, you can't continue to make the decision that no truck traffic on Pine. But you're going to understand what the impacts of that decision are going to be.
Um, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So, yeah, looking at the, like, the whole multimodal plan, the, the short-term, the long-term concepts. Um, the fairly unanimous community rejection of the couple of concept that we saw earlier this year. I'm hopeful that the rejection of the cuplet doesn't mean we're waiting twenty more years for improvements, long-term improvements to our east-west connection. This is a short-term improvement, but this could, um, uh, parlay into the longer term improvement. Um, the level of service throughout from Ontario city limits to the end of Fifth Avenue. And the, the, the on-ramp for ninety-five is, we know, close to failing at several intersections at present. Additionally, we know that we have completely neglected infrastructure from city limits all the way to, uh, this intersection, in fact. Uh, the city acquired the Dubbs property, uh, in anticipation of some improvements coming to that corridor. I've been, I'm just going to say it, I've been, um, making some trips up and down ninety-five this summer, a few trips to Canada. And every time I drive through Bonner's Ferry, I am so impressed with ITD's project going on in Bonner's Ferry right now. And if I could snap my fingers and bring that infrastructure improvement to our east-west corridor in Sandpoint. I guarantee it would drastically improve every, you know, left intersections level of service, because they're adding a turn, a turn lane. ITD's also installed sidewalks for like two or three miles where we don't have any sidewalks along Highway two. So I'm hopeful that, that by rejecting the couplet, we haven't turned away ITD and said, we don't want improvements on our east-west corridor. But I could see, um, once, you know, hopefully within eight to ten years, we do see some IT investment on our east-west corridor. That maybe doesn't include the couplet, but does bring a turn lane and infrastructure curbs and sidewalks along that corridor. Uh, which will spur, you know, economic development throughout the entire commercial C corridor, um, along Highway two. Uh, but with that will come improved level of service. And a lot of the truck traffic I think we're talking about isn't local truck traffic coming from the interstate plant or the, you know, the, 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 the peak. Guys coming through town, it's, it's east-west traffic, it's traffic coming from Highway two, uh, west. And, and trying to get north or south on Highway ninety-five. And I don't foresee a lot of those people turning left at Division because they think the intersection is going to be backed up on Pine. Um, the, the, the traffic that currently comes down Division will continue to come down Division, because a lot of it's coming. My impression is it's, it's more local truck traffic, not the through truck traffic, which is, is more of what I think is, is an issue on, on the Pine Street corridor. So, yeah, designating the highway as the truck route seems like the common sense from my perspective. That's what highways are for, it's for trucks to get through towns without going through the local streets. So our designated truck route for through traffic from Highway two to ninety-five should be Highway two to ninety-five. Not Highway two to Pine Street to First Avenue to Superior to ninety-five. That's just crazy. Those are all our streets. So I'm saying like, let's just keep trucks on the highway and local truck traffic. And we're not talking about banning local trucks here. If someone's doing a delivery or they're, you know, delivering anything in, in Sandpoint, they need to use Pine Street. Um, it, but it, it doesn't make sense to me that the highway would include. You know, the highway truck route would include Pine Street when we have highways that connect to each other. Uh, literally, it's a two-mile, uh, detour to go up to the on-ramp. And according to Google, it adds four to six minutes to your trip, so. I think I've said enough.
Yeah, those are great comments, councillor, I appreciate that. Um. So, we hear you that any change in the, um, designation of that street would have to be an amendment to the multimodal transportation plan. Um. And I think we've also, we're also hearing from the council that there seems to be a strong desire to move in that direction. Um, and we've certainly heard that from the public as well, and I think that needs to be considered when we're talking about. You know, key issues that we've heard from the public. Um, so I think in terms of moving forward, um, is there a way that we can? Um, you know, certainly we don't want to take any action, especially when we're considering spending tax dollars and building infrastructure. Um, we don't want to turn around and realize that we made the wrong decision, right? We want to do this right the first time. Um, so I think it's worth, um, either putting on the brakes and, um, making sure that we get this right. Um, and then moving forward. Um, and then moving forward with this in sometime in the future, or. Is there a way that you can give us, um, some kind of guarantee that? If we were to, uh, if the council were to approve this tonight. That we're not, um. We're not setting ourselves up as, as the counselor, uh, what Counselor Walker suggested, um, you know, we're not kind of, um. You know, setting ourselves up for a future that we've already heard pretty resoundingly that. We're not fond of, which is increased truck traffic on Pine Street, which we know is gonna be the case, so. I'm asking for help here from staff, is there, is there a way that we can, um? Maybe, um, redirect this grant a little bit so that. Um, we first, um, get the data that we need to make a more informed decision. Um, and then, um, you know, before we commit ourselves to a, a change in infrastructure?
I, I don't see that, well, well, um, this grant is time-sensitive. Uh, one of the requirements is that we would have bid-ready docks when it is awarded in October. So we, it's, it's a fast pace. Um, what we can do, it, it's an, it's something to consider. Uh, we can design, we can make design accommodations that. If trucks were to be removed from Pine Street, there's, there's no rework. There's no, you don't have to go back and do anything, it's just a matter of putting signs up, so you would put signs up on, um, the byway and signs up on. Fifth Avenue to prevent. Trucks from coming on Pine, um, to. What you could do is ask staff to focus and amend the, um. Multimodal tr- transportation plan figure with the truck route. I, I don't see that these, I, I don't think that these have to happen together. I kinda see that this project is separate from the multimodal transportation plan truck route. I think this project could happen, it could be successful, and we could amend the. Multimodal transportation plan separately as a separate effort.
I, I agree with that. Um, I, I, uh. I think this is a good plan, this moving to the stoplight is what our community wants. I think driving through Sandpoint for the, you know, the, the car traffic, this is gonna be a vast improvement, it's also gonna be a vast improvement for truck traffic. That's the, for, for the truckers themselves, that's what I'm afraid of, is that in, in our, in, in fulfilling a desire of our community, we're also making it a lot easier for truckers to get through town on this route. Therefore, we know it's gonna increase truck traffic, so I'm personally willing to move forward with this, I, I wanna see this implemented next year, I'd love to see that stoplight moved. A little over a year from now, but I'm afraid of what it's gonna do to Pine Street. In terms of the increased volume of trucks, if we're not simultaneously moving to amend our multimodal plan. And that means starting a conversation with ITD, let's do that.
Jennifer, do you wanna comment on that?
Well, I think it's within the. It's within the purview of, um. Counsel, if, if counsel would like to see staff come back with. An amendment to the multimodal plan, removing this as a truck route without the. We don't even have to run data to do it, you're just not gonna understand the. Necessarily the impact of it. But that's certainly a direction that counsel could give if. If you want to remove this as a, a truck route even advance of this project occurring. I mean, if that's, that's the strong decision. Of counsel.
And, and also if we are engaging, um, uh, um, engineering from Welch Comer, we can. Include in that process modeling for potential impacts. If, if, uh, if we were to make that amendment.
They could look at that.
Okay. Sounds great. That sounds great, okay.
And also is that the multimodal plan is one of these visionary documents, uh, amending it doesn't mean we're gonna put up signs and put police. Squad cars out there pulling over every truck that comes through tomorrow, in, in my understanding. I mean, i- it's, it's, i- is it current, I mean, it's designated truck route, but are there signs that say trucks go this way?
No.
I don't think so.
I believe ITD does have this, uh, truck route, if you were to Google ITD or Sandpoint truck routes on their website. Um, Pine shows up.
Yeah. I mean, keep in mind, there's a lot of stuff in a multimodal plan that isn't yet a reality. It's an aspirational document, amending the multimodal plan doesn't immediately mean that we have to put up signs and put squad cars out on the street. It, it's, it's something we're aspiring towards. So that doesn't mean, doesn't preclude us from seeking data and a better understanding it before we pursue enforcement and signage and all the other things that need to go into. Getting trucks off of Pine Street. Does, does that make sense, Jennifer?
Yes, what I'm suggesting, Mister Mayor, is you have a couple of options, I think, before you tonight. I, we're hearing that counsel, um, would like to consider or take action to, um. To remove this as a truck route. If counsel wants to take the action, counsel can take that action and direct staff to amend the multimodal plan. Even advance of having any data. On the other side, if counsel wants to have some data and does not want to wait until after this project is complete, where we actually have actual counts. But rather just modeled counts. Then counsel could approve moving forward with this project. And direct that modeling of truck traffic be a part of this project with, then. Based on that data, we'd come back, present it to counsel, and ultimately you make your decision on, um, whether to remove this as a truck route. Um, sometime down the road, but it may be. For consideration in conjunction with when this change is happening. So.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I remember before I was on council, I think this is true, just maybe a point of interest, is that when, when truckers. Are bringing a load through town, they have on their manifest or whatever you call it, they are given the road or the direction, the roads that they're supposed to take through town. And then, because when we built the radius, made the radius bigger there on, um, two and just before Pine, so that the big trucks could get around it. Um, uh, that time we were told that trucks are given a manifest when they're taking a load to wherever they're going. And it says, this is the route that you're supposed to follow, because I was. We had asked questions about that as a community is, so if they go otherwise, if they decide to take a shortcut. And they get caught, then they can be fined for that, and that goes against their record. So is that still not true, or is that something, because they're given the route that they're supposed to be taking?
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, all right, cuz it.
Do you wanna come to the, can you come forward, please? Thank you.
I believe what we're talking about is special permits issued by Idaho Transportation Department. For oversized trucks. Normal trucking, they don't have to have permits.
Right.
Go down the streets.
But oversized, they do.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they can get in trouble if they go somewhere else.
Normally oversized routes, we, uh, vehicles, we route them. They're coming down from the, from the north, Switzer Cut Off, North Warrior, Baldi, Division, out of Highway Two.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for that clarification, appreciate it. And, and the third option, you.
The third option would be wait until after the construction occurs. Model, then you're not modeling, you're going based on actual data and make a decision.
That was the second option.
No, the second, first option is counsel could make the decision to remove this as a truck mod, truck route. You don't have to have any data to make that decision, counsel by will could make that decision. Your section, uh, second option would be if counsel wants to move forward with this project in conjunction with. Uh, design of this project, um, add a scope for the engineering firm to also do modeling. With this removed as a truck route, so in conjunction with the timing of. Design and ultimately approval for construction, again, you have the data, so you understand the impacts, you could make the decision at that same time. Not wait until after this is constructed. The third option would be wait until after its construction, constructed going based on actual data. And then make a decision after this change occurs.
Okay.
Yeah, Mister Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, do we, I, I think we all agree, nobody wants trucks on Pine Street. Do, I, I guess the question is, do we have any data of, is it dump trucks that are on there? Is it food service trucks? Is it, like, I don't know, I've seen more dump trucks on Pine Street, and I know some people in here are close by, so they might be able to answer, but. I've seen more dump trucks than anything else, unless it's early in the morning, we get a food service truck that turns right on our street, they don't go all the way through Pine, so. I think data is important, is it, we're saying it's not local trucks, how do we know? Like, do we know?
So, for sure, if you don't mind, subjectively with.
That's what I'm saying.
Delivering and through there, so. Uh, what we see through there is, like, me. Driving through and making deliveries, I don't think that that's what we're, we're talking about, and we're, right, what we're, what we don't want is to inadvertently. Redirect all that truck traffic that we generally see up and on the highway. That's not what we want, I would imagine that the neighbors and the business owners are gonna be able to give real comment in there. My experience is those who know that, that can go through there quickly. Such it, and I'm not gonna call out any businesses, they know that that's a quick A to point B, they ju, they, they do. There are also those that are following GPS and are being directed that way and are making an error. Wha- what we don't want to do is add layers of complexity to this decision. That is going to direct all truck traffic through their local truck traffic, the FSA, the URM, the UPS, the FedEx. Like, that's not what we're talking about, I would imagine that most of our restaurants or businesses, as well as the residents that live there, are gonna be okay with. Receiving those type of local deliveries, they're okay with that. What they're not okay with is a logging truck, a double-stack logging truck coming through there, multiple cement trucks that are coming through there, any chip trucks, anything that. Uh, previous councils and residents worked really hard to get out of our downtown streets, is that?
Yeah, appreciate that, no, that's good, thank you.
And, and I think what I hear you saying, Holly, is that, um. Regardless of whether we choose A, B, or C. We're, we're going to design this intersection so that it could accommodate trucks, but not that it would be designed for trucks. So in terms of the infrastructure itself. It's not necessarily gonna change, is that, am I hearing you right?
Uh, that could be, that could be a design consideration, so an example of that would be that circle, the roundabout at Boyer and Larch. That circle accommodates trucks, it's not designed for trucks, so trucks can roll over the curb and drive up on it. Um, solutions like that, uh, or is something we could look at, so that if. We have trucks and one day we don't, we don't have to go in and, um. Put a ball about in or remove a ball about, it would work under either scenario.
Okay. So it sounds like we're, uh, comfortable to move forward here, and we can, uh, address the amendment and all that at some point in the future, in the near future. But as far as, uh, I think everyone's comfortable with the motion before us or the potential motion before us.
Uh, are we going to address the three options as far as, um, you know, I, I think Jennifer is suggesting that there is an option here where we could. Include in this, uh, contract with Welch, the modeling. And, you know, the, the, the modeling of how this, so that we have that data over the next year, and we don't wait two years before we have that data, and, and. You know, maybe, maybe within the next year, we'll be have, uh, uh, we'll be better informed and better prepared to provide a data. Backed decision about an amendment to our multimodal plan, that's personally what I'm in favor of, I totally respect. And what I love about our staff is their appreciation for data as well, and we've done such a good job, um, making informed decisions based on data up here, so I. I, I definitely respect and agree that we don't need to rush to make an amendment to the multimodal plan. Without at least first gathering some data, but to wait a year until this project's done, a year and a half to begin to gathering data, I think that's doing a disservice to our. Community when we could be, begin now, and, and a lot of the data we have is based on models as well, we saw the. The presentations of the models around the couplet, that, that wasn't based on, we didn't finish the couplet before we decided that we didn't want it, right? We made that decision, uh, based on models that we were presented with, so I think we, we should be making decisions here based on. You know, what, what is expected to happen. Yeah, even though, kinda common, we all agree common sense says that this is probably gonna lead to increased truck traffic on Pine.
Yeah, that's great, um, I wanna give the public an opportunity to comment on this, so at this point, I'd like to open it up to any members of the pub, the public that would like to comment. Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor. Garrett Burnclaw.
Hi, Council. I'm Garrett, I'm a, a local resident and also recently, um, a small business owner on Pine Street. And, um. Our own business opened, um, six weeks ago and, um. We've been, um, kinda looking at all the truck traffic and it's, um. A little bit of a concern for small businesses, especially as, you know. Sandpoint is changing and, and Sandpoint is a, an amazing. Town, especially the downtown core, it's, it's beautiful, it's walkable, and we love it, I mean, we're, we're super excited to be a part of it, but. Um, yeah, we are, um, a little bit concerned about that truck traffic, it's. A lot more than we originally anticipated when we started building there and it's, um. It's, it's getting more and more, and the trucks are getting bigger and, and, and faster and, um. Yeah, we're just, um, really worried about it, and we're hoping that. Sandpoint can be a walkable, beautiful town that connects people and, yeah, that is something that I just wanted to mention. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Mister Burnclaw, appreciate that.
Jamie Terry. Hi, everyone. So, um, my husband and I have lived in Sandpoint for six years, and we currently live on Pine. And we've lived there for two years, and to echo what Garrett said, we've just seen the truck traffic get. Bigger, faster, louder, um, I would say that we do see the double stack, uh, logging trucks. Multiple times a day, every day, we see like long haul freight type, I don't know the right words, but like long haul freight trucker. Uh, trucks come through and, um, it feels. It feels strange to live in a neighborhood and like walk out the door with my dog and then just like. Like big logging truck coming at me, I, um. I know there's a lot that I don't know, and I know there's a lot of different priorities and needs. Uh, and for a trucker, probably four to six minutes on a route is, is meaningful, like, I don't know, they have to make deliveries on time too. So I get that there's a lot here, I can only speak from my experience. I wish I could come to you with like some really great options, because I know that you all work hard. And thank you for the heart and the energy and the time, and thank you all for the heart and energy and time that you've put into trying to create a solution, but. Um, as someone who lives on Pine, speaking from my experience, it is really, um. Like, just the idea of not having trucks in front of my house, my whole body exhales, like, my whole body just goes like. Oh, my gosh, that would be amazing, because it is loud and it's, it's, um. It's scary, it, there's kids that play on the street with, um, the lovely Burnclaw across from us now, there's more. Bike traffic and there's just, it, it's. It feels really scary to like be putting stuff in my car on Pine and like a logging truck goes by me. It feels really scary to try to ride my bike into town and I'm like fighting. Vehicles that are a thousand times my size, and it's weird to be going through that when I live in a neighborhood, like, it's not a highway. So, um. Yeah, this, I'm not complaining, just trying to share the reality of what I've been living with. Um, and I appreciate you all for listening and for everything you do for us, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Terry, appreciate those comments.
Katie Adams. Hello, everyone, um, I came into this meeting a little bit scared, but it sounds like you all have, um. The community's best interest, so I feel really good about that. I think I'm seconding Jamie and Garrett so far as owning Hartbills for a year now. On the intersection of First and Pine, I can tell you. Very anecdotal data that try to sit out there and have lunch and have a conversation, it's pretty much impossible. With the amount of trucks that come through. It seems like they're every ninety seconds, but it is a lot, so in my opinion. It is very disruptive, it's very scary. It's very loud, it's like, it's so loud that it really is hard to have a conversation, and when we're trying to. Walk around town and, and just live and be in that area of what should be. A non-highway, it seems. Pretty absurd for it to be at the level that it currently is, given that the. That it isn't a highway, and I feel like if this was happening on. Um, Church Street and First Street, it, town would be outraged about it, and obviously it is, and that's why it's being pushed to Pine Street. But I just feel like it's being pushed to Pine Street because there was nowhere else for it to be pushed, but it seems like the highway. there was nowhere else for it to be pushed, but it seems like the highway is an obvious place to push it. So I guess I feel very hopeful that we're on to the right solution, and I really thank you guys for your consideration, it seems like you're gonna make a good decision, and hopefully we are going to limit the truck traffic that goes through there, I think it will benefit all of the residents that live on pine, along with all of the um business owners, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, appreciate those comments.
Mr. Mayor, that is how who uh wishes to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may.
Yeah.
There may be a real opportunity in this, going back to early, earlier discussion this evening around the design competition. If um council decides to choose the option of having the modeling done now, um, as a part of the team that was selected to move forward in the design competition, Welch Comer is actually part of that team and has done some modeling and looked at some suggested improvements um as part of the vision for um first coming into town and the entry into downtown, so um, there may be an op, uh, a great coalesce here and an opportunity if council decides that you wanna do the modeling now, with them doing the modeling and that informing really concept development that they're doing on First Avenue already, and specifically with the citizen um concern that you just had um there on impacts to at first, I know that's something that they're considering, and has already presented some initial recommendations and concept, but would be moving on to the next stage of the design competition, so really looking at that entry coming off of Superior on to First, coming off of ninety five, and what that does with trucks into downtown and just overall traffic and balancing that with pedestrians and bicyclists and the safety there, I know they've got some specific recommendations around specifically um creation of some bike lanes on First Avenue connecting South Sandpoint into City Beach, and so there may be an opportunity with them modeling for it to look both at First as well as up on Pine.
Jennifer, once again, uh, that is a brilliant suggestion, thank you, appreciate it. Um, it sounds like we have um uh, the makings of a motion on the floor to uh approve the resolution for professional services agreement with Welch Comer Engineers, with the understanding that uh there's a desire to do modeling for um for truck traffic uh to be uh, well, modeling the alternative of, of uh amending Pine Street to be a non-truck route. Um, and at the same time, uh engaging Welch Comer, or I should say engaging GGLO, um, Welch Comer through GGLO and uh Bernardo Wills to consider um a, a, a more um amenable solution there um uh at uh Fifth and Pine. So is that um, is that fairly stated?
One hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
So this is what we need, public, we need, when we have these things up here, we need you guys to come in and contribute to this, so we can have all the expertise to move towards what's best for our community, yes.
Local government hard at work, folks, thanks for making it happen. Okay, with that, uh, motion is approved, and uh.
Got one more.
We have one more.
We do.
On the hold, okay.
Oh, the grant.
Yeah. So um I will now entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing submission of an application to the Idaho Transportation Department's strategic strategic initiatives grant program, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, this will be a real call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor McAlli- McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Motion passes, and this meeting is adjourned, once again, thanks everybody for your participation, appreciate it.